All right, got my gavel, I'm so happy. Let me call the order, the Monday, May 20th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. Mr. Holleran, you're the roll taker today?
Yeah.
Got it.
Uh, Mr. President.
Here.
Mr. Quintez.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Pottenberry.
Here.
Ms. Teetz.
Here.
Mr. Rankin.
Here.
Mr. Rades.
Here. All right, can I get a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? No, all right, unanimously adopted this agenda. Have we received any petitions for items not on this evening's agenda? No? Okay. Let me guess, everybody's here for item 6A, the George Mason High School Site Plan, Public Hearing and Action. So let me kick it off to the staff here to give us a report and then we'll hear from the applicant, I suspect.
Yeah, the applicant has... The applicant's prepared to do a brief presentation and on the site plan tonight. So I'll go ahead and start off then. I'll get to at the end, I have amended motion that's on the DAAS, so I'll walk through that in detail. But at this point, the request for the Planning Commission is to hold, it's a public hearing tonight, we've noticed all adjacent property owners. And after the hearing, discuss the item, give final consideration to it in approving the site plan application in a phased development format for the planned high school on Leesburg Pike. Planning Commission has further requested to timely schedule a public hearing and final action on the second phase of the project mid-July, but that's a date to be determined. The recommendation from the staff tonight is in consideration of the items that are outstanding on the site plan, which we'll talk about under the motion in detail. And in order to schedule construction of the new high school during the academic, avoiding the academic calendar year, staff recommends a phased approval of the site plan. Then a partial approval and a second phase would complete a full site plan, and we'll talk about that under the motion. The Planning Commission on May 6th held a work session, discussed this item and received a presentation from the applicant. Several commissioners shared concerns regarding the stormwater management plan for the site and the need for more waiver justifications. Summary of those comments, work session is provided in the staff report. The Planning Commission in the work session discussed the stormwater, which was the main concern among several members and what staff's been working on in detail. And we had a memorandum from Alan Dalton, who is here tonight from our Department of Public Works, representing us on the stormwater engineering. And he's here at your request to take any questions you might have on this and to clarify any concerns as pertains to the stormwater management. Also, secondly, we were looking at auto circulation and parking. There were several questions in regard to the phased parking over the construction time period. And then also staff was looking at the area next to the middle school where there's substandard spaces in terms of size. And we've been working with the applicant to address that either by variance or some modification to the site plan. Thirdly, site and building architecture, the Planning Commission had commented on that and had asked a number of questions in regard to that. Regarding to the subdivision consolidation, on May 6th, the Planning Commission approved the subdivision for the site as well as the consolidation plot. And it was also, in dividing up the property, was to divide up a parcel for the 10-acre area for the Falls Church Economic Development Project Site. Then, based on action by the City Council on May 13th and approving the comprehensive agreement, they actually deferred the SAE, which was originally scheduled until July 8th. And a new revised conceptual plan and related parcel reconfiguration is now on the table. So the subdivision that was approved on May 6th, as well as consolidation plots, were not recorded and available at the time of the site plan tonight. And so these are also pending items that'll be wrapped up in the next 30 days. These changes also require that the site plan be amended for the Phase 2, the trapezoid area in which the parking garage was scheduled to go. And so that could be a surface parking lot or other instead of the future garage concept. But that'll be studied and the applicant would come back to address that as a Phase 2 site plan. And in this case, it would be a site plan amendment, so that's pending. In terms of staff review, we've continued to look at the materials. Public Works on May 8th indicated the current status of the stormwater information and plans. And that's indicated on lines 93 through 107 there in front of you. And they indicated the main issues for Phase 1 of the project would be changing a minimum to silt fence, to super silt fence on the lower limits of disturbance of the temporary bypass or runoff from existing storms. Or current plans would require a pumping system, it's not shown on the plans at this time. Also, information on stormwater portions of the plans indicate that pipes are too small for the calculated flows and that the stormwater management bio basins are also too small. So enlargements of those are needed and could impact portions of the site. In summary, the DPW staff indicated that staff's preliminary review of the applicant's latest submission indicates a number of the stormwater erosion control responses are still in a pending final submission standpoint. So that's one of the main things that are still pending on the site plan at this point. The applicant has also requested several waivers, they're highlighted in this chart. First one is perimeter lot landscaping, and they've indicated, the center indicates what the requirements are, which is a 10-foot wide buffer area with a minimum number of shrubs and trees. They propose width of around 4.5 to 5 feet of the 10. It's provided along the entire parking lot perimeter, basically paralleling the service road and Route 7. There was a graphic that was provided on the materials, and the plant material is still being defined as to what goes in there pertaining to the code requirements. The second, Section 48, 1182B1, interior parking lot landscaping requires 162 square foot planting island for each 32, 140 square feet of parking lot area. Each island must contain at least one shade tree. So they've indicated that the planting islands, in terms of the requirement for their site, would be about almost 9,000 square feet, and they're providing about 2,300 in the parking lot in front of the athletic fields. The adjacent middle school lot is still to be determined on that factor. Thirdly, the interior parking lot landscaping requires a minimum 5% interior. 1.26% is provided and the square footage listed. The other section is interior parking lot landscaping, and there's a requirement on the distance on that, so that's still to be determined. The next section includes the minimum size for planting islands, which are 9 by 18 in area, and that's also to be determined. And the dimensions of off-street parking spaces, the requirement is 9 by 18, aisle widths of 22 feet. And so this is the area that's substandard next to the middle school, and so that's to be determined as well. Then, lastly, I mentioned the subdivision consolidation needs to be part of the site plan set. And so we're pending the resubmission, which is really the additional phase on this redevelopment project. The applicant's responses, they had responded in Attachment 5, comments in a letter in May, and so those are detailed in the staff report. They can speak to those tonight as well regards to the items that I've highlighted. So timing is the, school board is scheduled groundbreaking for the high school on June 14th. Ability to get approval of the site plan with the phasing and able to proceed with the initial site development work during the summer break is a critical aspect of the project's schedule. The staff report then outlines the high school construction schedule as well as the site plan approval history and schedule to date. So getting back to, now to the motion, I've given you a revised, I'll call it amended motion tonight. And it's, looks like this, it's a front and back page. So we've added several whereas', and I'm gonna read through this because this is important and it's very detailed. And then we can discuss it. Generally, what we're doing is we're indicating through the motion of the reasoning for proceeding with approving the site plan tonight. And we've indicated the format for that and the elements of that in detail. And generally, what it's referring to is phasing, which is permitted under the city code. And the phasing, right now, the site plan sets it up in terms of Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 1 is the site plan as we know it and reflected in the site plan documents for this application at this time. The Phase 2 is the area on the site plan that's not planned or site planned at this point, and it's the trapezoid area that was indicated for a future shared garage. And when that would be designed and came in, it also would address all the other elements that are associated with a parking facility. Stormwater cogs would be done for that portion of the site, landscaping and so forth. So all the normal requirements would be applied to that at that time. In terms of phasing development on this project, the Phase 2, the trapezoid, is still the same. And in order to move this site plan along, pending items, we've taken Phase 1 and broken it into Phase 1A and Phase 1B. And we've then defined that in the list here, which I'll walk through verbatim. And then what we've done is after we've defined those two phases, we've indicated what's allowed and what's not in those phases. And basically, Phase 1A would allow for pre-construction activities as listed. And Phase 1B would allow for building construction post that period. And in order to allow for the Phase 1A pre-construction activities, you would need to waive a number of items that are still pending for that initial phase. And then within supposedly the, you know, so forth, maybe the next 60 days or sooner, those items would be wrapped up and then all approved under the second part of Phase 1, which will be Phase 1B. And then Phase 2 is unchanged, which was the trapezoid. So now that I've outlined it, I'm gonna walk through it since this is all new to you on the DAAS tonight, so. The proposed motion is Site Plan Application 2019-0013. Whereas the planned George Mason High School and related campus site improvements provide significant community benefits in providing for the construction of a new high school on adjacent land to provide for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project as a proposed vibrant mixed-use development. And whereas planned project is generally consistent with zoning in the comprehensive plan, and whereas the site is still being considered for approval of conditioned waiver and variances in phasing. Uh, let's see, there's a second one, you wanna pull that one up? This was an earlier version. Let's just pause for a second. So it would be the...
PCU.
Yeah, the one dated. Yeah, I just realized. So, let's go on. Scroll down for a minute, I'll take a look at it.
Go on.
Hmm, no. No, that's not it either, there's, there's one more then. Nope.
It's not the earlier one?
No, I pulled up another one.
Okay.
Yeah, I should've deleted those we were working on. Not it.
I'm not a Mac.
Let's see.
What's the other one I pulled up?
That was the earlier one, wasn't it? Go ahead and pull that down a little bit. It should've been like a, it was like a 5 o'clock. That was the morning, yeah. Huh, so it's not, well, anyway, maybe it's something to do with...
This was at 3 o'clock this afternoon?
Yeah, this was a, it was a 5 o'clock one, so I guess we'll just, it was a long day. That was, there was the morning version, the afternoon version. But anyway, I'm gonna go ahead and just go through this because you have a copy in front of you.
The version we have on our...
The DAAS is the correct one, yes. And so, so I guess go ahead and just take that down because it doesn't match. Let's see.
There we go.
Yeah, you can just leave it there, yeah, put the staff report back in. So I'm gonna start here with the third whereas, the site plan does not have all the information required for the full site plan approval. And then the fourth whereas, the Planning Commission finds approval of Phase 1A and related waivers will achieve the essential objectives of Division 7 Site Plans, Chapter 48, 1137, which is required information, the absence of the particular requirements. And the next whereas, the requested waivers for Phase 1A of the site plan requirements would not be substantially detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Whereas the understanding the importance of the project to the community and the need to phase construction with the academic year, and whereas the Planning Commission recognizes that the site plan will be constructed in phases as provided for on Section 48, 1139, which is phased development of the city code, with the phases being as follows. Phase 1A is the site areas defined by the site plan excluding the Phase 2 area, which is the trapezoid, but including only limited site development and pre-construction activities as follows construction, as follows, the construction fencing, rough grading, excavation, foundation, footings would be allowed during Phase 1A. Phase 1B is the site areas defined by the site plan, the same area excluding the Phase 2 area, the trapezoid, and allowing for any other construction, building activities after the pre-construction activities, basically. Phase 2 includes all work on the Phase 2 area of the plans, which is the trapezoid area, and future parking, stormwater, and related plan improvements that are associated with that. So the final whereas would be the Planning Commission finds that the following requirements of the zoning ordinance, 48, 1137, should be waived for Phase 1A only of the site plan as permitted by Section 48, 1138. So the six items are listed, and they're indicated as item number 5, and that's just as it is in the city code verbatim. Subdivision plot, when applicable, if the site plan covers more than one lot or parcel, subdivision plot would bind the properties to the uses shown on the plan, shall be made part of the plan approval. Approval and accreditation of such plot shall be a condition of approval of the site plan. Second item is item 14 on the list in the code. Schedule showing compliance with off-street parking loading requirements, Article 5, Division 2 of the chapter. Three would be item number 15 in the list in the code. Location, dimensions, vertical clearance, type of surfaces of off-street parking, loading, standing spaces, and aisles in accordance with Article 5, Division 2 of the chapter. Fourthly, item number 24 in the code, a separate landscape plan would satisfy requirements of Section 44, 109A and other applicable versions of that chapter. Number 5 is item number 26 in the code. Disposition of stormwater drainage and detention systems indicating pipe sizes, types, grades, and including all calculation. And lastly, number 6 is item number 27 in the code. Existing and proposed sanitary sewer facilities indicating pipe size, types, and grades where connection is to be made to the city system, including all calculations. So this list of six items is being waived for the first half of Phase 1, which is 1A. These would be satisfied under the second part of Phase 1B in the next 60 days or so. The last statement is now therefore I move the Planning Commission to waive the requirements listed above for the submission of Phase 1A of Site Plan Application 2019-0013 and approves Phase 1A of the site plan for the planned George Mason High School. Furthermore, the Planning Commission acknowledges that at this time, it's not approving Phase 1B or Phase 2, and that the Planning Commission expects to review full site plan requirements under Phase 1B on or about July 15th. So now that I've walked through that, and this is something that Planning Director and I have worked through and with the city attorney since Friday. As Mr. Kressner had inquired about the details of this, and the motion previously was very general while the staff report was looking to address a lot of these items, so. I will, I've completed my review of the staff report and the motion. So I'll take any questions on that, and then we'll go ahead and have the applicant do their presentation.
I have one.
All right, yeah, go ahead.
And it's an easy one. So at the end of the motion, we talked about we're gonna review the Phase 1B section by July 15th. Should we also have verbiage in there about when we'll actually review Phase 2?
At this point, that's to be determined, so...
So should we just say that...
It will, in the future.
Yeah, so I just wonder if we should've specified that Phase 2 would be reviewed at some future date to make it sound...
Yeah, I think earlier...
It kinda leaves it hanging.
Yeah, in terms of...
Because that could be, that could be years from now.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, under the definition on...
I mean, I mean, it literally could be years from now.
Yeah, yeah, because the school, you know, it's not gonna open for a couple of years.
Well, because when it was gonna potentially be a park, it probably won't be years from now because it probably won't be a parking garage. But when it was gonna be a parking garage, it was gonna be tied in with the commercial development, which isn't gonna get started for a couple of years.
Well, I mean, the site plan is, it requires 400 parking spaces for the school to open. So they will be doing temporary spaces on an interim basis, and when it's time to open, they'll have done Phase 2 site plan in order to have those parking spaces.
But Phase 2, the trapezoid currently exists where the current high school sits. So nothing's gonna happen to that until the new school's built and opened and the old school is torn down.
Right, that's true.
That's true, yeah. But, but in terms of the requirements of the site plan you're approving, it's for 400 spaces.
Right.
So those...
Can we pull that out? We don't have...
Yeah, and when we, I mean, in Phase 2, everything we're talking about, the future parking, stormwater, everything is just stormwater and everything related to that trapezoid, that's it. So we know it's a couple of years from now, but I just, I don't know, I just thought, looking at it, just incomplete without, like, we're just not even talking about what happens with Phase 2, you know, after this motion. But I just thought it might be smart just to say Phase 2 will be approved at a future date.
Yeah, we could...
Based on demolition or whatever.
Yeah, you could add that to the end of the motion easily, under that furthermore.
So that it's tied in as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just felt like it was a detail thing.
I mean, in terms of sort of defining it earlier under the phased development, we said Phase 2 includes all work on the Phase 2 area of the trapezoid and future parking, storm, and other related site plan items. So it's indicated as a future item, but yeah, there's no, nothing further. But yeah, if you wanna put it under the, furthermore, they would put it in the context of the other phase.
It just, it doesn't make those combinations.
Okay, what else?
Mr. Stevens?
So the six items that we're being asked to waive, but they'll come back for our review on July 15th?
Yes, or a date certain.
So those are pretty considerable items, I mean, and there's not that much time between now and July 15th. Pretty firm expectation that all these issues are gonna be resolved and...
Well, I mean, the, the date is, is subject to change, on or about. So I mean, that's our target date, and we'd like to do it sooner, could be a little later, but the key is to get all this done in a final form for your approval. So however long that takes, well...
So I assume that means, but I don't wanna put words in your mouth, that you're pretty confident that all these, all these issues can get resolved in, you know, a month and a half.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something you can also ask the applicant, but yeah, I think, I think these are items that, that we wanna keep working on diligently. And if we can wrap it up by then, great, if not, it may, it may take a few more weeks or even another month. But I, I see it in a short term as being wrapped up. And then the, the school would need this full approval to start any construction. I mean, they can do pre-construction activities only under this.
Gary, to that point, I mean, I mean, Tim raises great, great points, I mean, these are, most of them are significant. I mean, there are a few here that I think maybe the answers are easy, but, I mean, I think the big issue that's changed just in two weeks, and I know this has been an evolving, you know, project that seems to, you know, there's always a, there's always a new, you know, change that we're usually the last to know about, but in this case, the deletion of the garage, I think is a significant change. And we haven't really talked about that, I mean, it was kind of brushed over, I don't know, but, but, I mean, is there any background as to that? I know a little bit about it, but just anecdotally, I mean, and, and, and I, not that we can change that fact, it seems like that's been decided, it has to be deleted. Where's the, how confident are we that there's room on this site to meet the parking without that garage? And where might that parking go, I mean, Phase 1B in the next six weeks? Where, I mean, we, we know where that, we're considering, or the applicant is considering putting that, the, the missing spaces that were heretofore gonna be in that garage?
I think the applicant can address that, but I will say that before the developer came, came on the scene and then proposed the use of the land in a different configuration with this, creating this parcel for shared parking, the schools did have a surface parking lot that I think was almost, almost 190 spaces laying out.
On the chart.
That's right there, that shade.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Exactly the trapezoid, just where...
Right, yeah, so it's...
So, and whether, you know, that's just, I mean, so that's to be determined by the applicant as to how many parking spaces they need and what they're gonna...
And to be clear, the spaces that were gonna be provided by the parking deck were not gonna be online for two years after the school was built. So they, they were gonna have some sort of parking solution.
Interim arrangements, yeah.
Yeah, I know that, there was like, there was like a construction phasing kind of, you know...
Yeah, they're gonna do off-site parking for, you know, interim time.
I mean, this is basically return to the RFDP, because I think that's what we saw at the RFDP stage, was just a surface parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, they're, I mean, at this point, they're back to that, but they still have the opportunity to site plan it as, as they need, so. And it would come back to you.
Yeah, this was considered, I mean, I don't know how it's changed, but the reasoning has obviously been altered over time, but there was a scenario in which the developer had envisioned this would just being a surface lot. So I, I don't know the answer to your question, but I assume they have worked out a place for those additional missing spots. And I don't know, I don't know how where it is.
Well, to be fair, if the schools are only gonna have basically one level of parking deck, and that was gonna satisfy their parking needs.
Like, one and a half, 187 spaces.
It was, yeah, it was a little more than four, but yeah.
Is there room in that trapezoid for 187 spaces? Like, does the geometry allow for 187 conforming spaces in that trapezoid?
It was laid out that way originally, before the developer changed.
Yeah.
Oh, he just turned it down, yeah.
You guys need the speakers or you can hear each other?
We don't, but I don't know if they, I don't know if they do, I can hear them.
But, um, we can ask the applicant next, so, but I recall, it's a little bit of echo now. I recall seeing that.
May I, okay, um, excuse my voice, please. Let's go through the scenario, we're breaking ground on July fourteenth. We're supposed to be approving another bit on July fifteenth. Within that month, what are they allowed to do under this interim situation?
Well, the, the July fifteenth is not a hard and fast date.
We'll wipe that one off.
Yeah, it, it's a floating date, but that's our target.
Okay, then, under, other than all these six things. In kind of plain language, dealing with grading and dealing with removal of dirt, digging holes, footing in, uh, stormwater, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. What exactly are they gonna be allowed to do under this?
Phase one A.
Yeah, it's, it's phase one A and the, the things that they, and these are items that we, we talked to the team from the schools and, and walked through it. So basically, it would allow for installation of a construction fencing, rough grading, excavation, foundation and footing work. So it's pre-construction activities. They can't start building the structure until phase one B is approved.
Do that in a couple of months anyway.
Which is, you know, that, something that, so, you know, it's just wrapping up the full site plan approval under that phase.
Okay, so, but during that time, there could be all the grading going on, and I know that they're gonna have to level everything in big, big holes. So, you know, and during the summer, there's just a couple of months in there before school starts and everything, so. I just wonder how much they expecting to get done.
Well, we can, we can ask the applicant, cause they're, they're obviously, um, have, have all this scheduled and give you an idea of what they're
I've got a lot, I've got a lot of questions.
Planning to do in the, in the immediate months ahead, so.
You know, I, I know we got the site plan online and, um, you can read some of it. It's very miniscule. I know I probably should be able to enlarge it somewhere along the line, but, but there were some things that I picked up that I know that when they did do their presentation, I'm gonna be very interested finding out about. I can see all this, cause I know the necessary timeline is important, uh, particularly getting some noisy work, but that's, it's not gonna get all of it done within that summertime. You know, we've been watching holes being built up at Founder's Row. How did, I said holes being built, you can't build a hole, well, dig it out, but, um. And I've never seen so many huge dump trucks in all my life as the staging for Founder's Row, oh my gosh.
It's a big site.
So this will obviously be a question for the applicant, you know, what's going on, I mean, to address what's happening in phase one A. Um, I'm a little, uh, unclear about this list of activities. I'm not sure, I understand construction fencing, rough grading and excavation, but it's not clear to me, you know, how you're gonna do foundations and footings without the underground rough-ins, so.
Right.
Which is now being held up, so I, you know, there's submittals that have to go on here, there's just a lot of construction activities. And some of them certainly can happen, but footings perhaps, but there's gonna be utilities on it, is this foundation, right?
The utilities within the footprint of the building won't go in until the footings are completed, so.
Right, that, but you have the, the foundation here as well.
Correct, yeah, so during this timeframe, we would be looking, so we're doing the mass excavation of the site, starting the excavation for the footings.
For the record, introduce yourself, I don't know you.
Sure, I'm, my name is Jennifer Max, I'm with Gilbane, we're the design builder for the project.
Okay, you gotta recognize me, I'm not that.
Jack Chen, uh, one of the architects. So.
I will, I think, so you're, I, could you just clarify what your specific question is regarding the timing?
So, there is a roughly a month of activities that you're trying, you're trying to get, you know, shovels in the ground right away, I get, understand that. Trying to put up fencing, get the site prepared, move forward. There is a lot of activities here, and I'm, and if you're putting in the foundation and the footings, I'm concerned about the underground utilities, the underground rough-ins as it relates to all these other things that you're not allowed to do. And so I'm concerned about those two things conflicting specifically and how that schedule looks.
Okay, so the sequence within the footprint of the building, um, once we've completed the mass excavation of the deepest part of the basement, which is on the, the gym side level, we then have very large footings that go in in that portion of the building. So we'll be digging those footings first, so we'll be doing all the, our concrete foundation walls and the footings within the footprint of the building. Um, after those are done, concrete is poured, then we will come in with all the, um, underslap drainage piping. So, based on the July fifteenth, which I think our team is very committed to get it, we, we feel comfortable that with the series of discussions that we've been having with the city, that these items are gonna be resolved by July fifteenth. For us, that date is absolutely critical for us to make sure that it's resolved, because we wouldn't be able to start standing up structural steel without the one B approval, and we're looking to start that in early August. So, we are very focused on making sure we resolve whatever concerns that the city has, um, to make sure that we get the approval for the next phase. So I think our hope is that we would be here sooner than the July fifteenth to resolve that. And then just to address the phase two concern, our plan is to come back this fall. So, um, we are doing the test fit on the trapezoid. We need, we know, we, we need to accommodate the four hundred spaces on site, so our, this is news to us just a few weeks ago as well, so. Um, our plan is to, we're starting to do the test fits, um, and we'll be working on construction documents for that area, probably in the July, August timeframe. So the thought was, we would come back in the fall, which is really what we had always worked on, um, with the planning staff, regardless of whether the garage was going there or not, because there's, are still some coordination points that we need to do with the developer. So we always said that once the developer signed their agreement with the city, then we would do a final set of coordination this summer, which would allow us to come in, back in with the, if we were coming back in with a phase two consolidated plan, we would do that this fall. So it's not years.
That you had to accommodate the four hundred spaces on site?
No, about the garage not happening, so if the plans had been always, had started to progress at the garage, seemed like it was gonna happen. When it was determined that the garage wasn't going to, we now need to go back and, and officially document the trapezoid.
And on that point, I mean, they, just related to things you need to sort out in the next month. I mean, the city engineer is here, right, so let, let's talk about stormwater, which was like one of the major issues that I had last time. Um, where are we on that? You know, we only have a few weeks then to sort it out under this, uh, proposal, to phase it in this way. So where are we? You know, how far apart are we and, you know, what's the plan to, to resolve it, uh, in six weeks?
So Alan's here. Yeah, I'll start off, and then Ken's here from the applicants engineering group.
I'm Alan Dalton, city stormwater sanitary engineer since January twenty-second. Happy to give you my background, uh, but probably not that important. Where I've been, where we've been, it's where we are now. So where we are now is, uh, we've had meetings with our K and K, we've gone over all of these comments. They've been working hard as they can to resolve them. They sent me a new plan of profiles for the storm sewer Friday, Friday afternoon. Uh, that would address mostly the hydraulic grade line, and we can talk about what that is on it and what it means. And then at three thirty today, they sent the entire stormwater design package, so I have not reviewed that yet. So, my points or the requirements for all this, I recognize it's a fast track project and we need to get under construction at that time, and this is the mechanism for it. So what we need, you disturb more than an acre of land in Virginia, you need a state-approved stormwater pollution prevention plan, SWIP. We are the administrators of it, the city administers their own review as part of, I hate throwing out all, all these, uh, acronyms. M S four program to monitor and reduce the amount of phosphorus nitrogen suspended solids and as of July first, PCVs in our waters. So, that is something that we absolutely have to have, we only have two sites in the city that disturb more than an acre now. Rev, uh, cottages, which is one point two, of Founder's Row, which I think is one point five, and this one, which will be thirteen. So, we can't not enforce our own requirements on ourselves. So, to get to that point, which is a permit from the state, we need the SWIP, which is erosion sediment control plan, pollution prevention, control of any paint chemicals. Any discharge to the stream, what you do if there is one, what the response to that is, what your inspections are. And the state has a three-week review time on it, so backing up from that, that gives us about a week to get that, yeah. Ken sent me today part of it and is working on the rest, so, uh, I feel like the stormwater is gonna be resolved in the next week. We're meeting within tomorrow to go over, uh, the latest submissions, and then the, uh, SWIP will be.
Your expected resolution, does that include resolution of the pipes are too small? And also the bio basins are too small?
That, that is hydraulic grade line, and when you design a storm sewer, one of the things you show hydraulic grade line, that shows and generally in a gravity sewer system where you're relying upon gravity to push the water through the pipe, the hydraulic grade line is at the top of the pipe. For an existing pipe that you're trying to use and not replace, that, you can pump more water through it by having pressure on it. And that's what the hydraulic grade line shows. So the recent submission on Friday, we're pretty much all gravity flow on it, so, uh, and with the calculations you sent today, I would guess that, uh, remodeled it in terms of the wind flow or more accurately, uh, but I won't know till I look at it.
We have remodeled all of it.
Which way is the flow going?
Downhill.
Down, yeah, I know downhill, but.
Goes into the I sixty-six Friday.
Okay, okay.
Yet not into the city.
Okay. That was not a frivolous question.
How about the BMP, uh, measures, I mean, is that, is that changed, is that, where's that?
All of those came in, the BMP devices, uh, statewide, we all use the same spreadsheet for every municipality, every jurisdiction, the same spreadsheet for it. So, our initial, our issue early on was we weren't seeing those as part of the early plan submissions, we weren't seeing complete ones. So now, we have complete ones, uh, the BMP devices, those three bio-retention basins that were too deep.
Yeah.
Haven't re-reviewed them, I'm trusting they're not anymore.
It's all being handled on site, all the BMP?
Yes, no off-site purchase credit. I, as, as of the last submission, you know.
If, if, if I may, um, we, we've been, we were asked to, to do a quick presentation, and we'd love to be able to do that. And I think we could segue into some of these, some of these discussions, and, and I think within it, we can address some of the other, other issues as, as well.
Sounds good.
Okay, alright, uh, well, feels like we just saw each other yesterday, probably.
Many times.
Thank you for having us, so we have a really quick presentation, as Gary had mentioned. We're in coordination with, with the staff in terms of what, what we believe you wanna see tonight and in terms of having, um, you know, some of the public here. So we thought it was an idea to take a step back and, and really look at where, where we've come from and the excitement that, that we've, that the project has brought to the city and to, 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 uh, the schools in general. Uh, and then from that, we can kinda segue into some of the more detailed issues that we've, um, already talked about. So, um, you know, well, we'll talk about the evolution of the designs, sustainability, um, site circulation, which I know that has come up. Parking, of course, we've, we've already talked about, and of course, um, NASP, but last but not least, stormwater management. Gary had mentioned that when we came back two weeks ago, we talked, uh, more, uh, in-depth and specific about the designs of the building as well as the design of the site and landscape architecture, so we, we chose to not include those things, but we certainly have them available if any questions may arise again from, from that. So, we, we've talked about it already, the R F D P, uh, site plan is that, so almost a year ago, uh, we submitted this, this, this thing, this, this beautiful rendering of, of our design here. Fast forward a little bit to our schematic design, um, you know, some of the geometry has, has changed. We have started to coordinate with the developers a little bit. Uh, and then of course, the, uh, a couple of months ago, or a few months ago, uh, we, we met for a work session as well, again. Further developments, uh, in coordination with the developer, you start to see the garage, um, within our site. Uh, and then when we came back here, um, a couple of weeks ago, uh, the point behind this is that through the last year, we've, we've, we've kinda stuck to our guns in terms of the site development. Unified six twelve campus that we have here, um, consolidation of the athletic field, so basically all of the athletic fields are behind the school in a secured area, um, we wanna be a good neighbor, so because we did that, we had, we gave the economic development team the ability to propose something like that, where that worked and now we all know, we, we found out a couple of weeks ago, just like you guys. Uh, but we certainly gave them the ability to, to do that, we feel real, real excited about that. Um, safety and security, the fact that all the fields are behind a fence, um, so it's all, it's not only good for the schools, but it's also good for the community in terms of being able to, to operate it, whether it's, uh, with the schools or independently on the weekends. Um, and stormwater ma- stormwater management best practices, we started to talk about, uh, a little bit of that, um, already, but in, in a nutshell, we're, we're utilizing the site in its entirety. Uh, we have only one manufactured device, that is huge in terms of the, for the client and maintenance wise. So we've done everything on the site, uh, and we're happy to talk about that, uh, in a little bit more.
Is that the jellyfish system?
Yeah. And of course, we, we couldn't do this without you guys, without, without people back here, and without you guys, uh, at the city, um, uh, and, and our clients, uh, Sunday series, as you guys know about, uh, all the various different committees that we've been a part of. Engagement with all of you folks, uh, meetings with the fire marshal, Tom Poler, and, and emergency services, uh, the A A B, which we were there about a month ago. Uh, of course, presentations and work sessions with you guys and, and, and many more, so this is not something done in, in isolation. A quick summary of our sustainability goals, of course, um, it's not just a, a functional building, but it's also a, a green building, something that we're striving for, which is lead gold. Some of the issues that we're dealing with here, some of our guiding principles that, that allow us to get to our sustainability goals. Uh, the reasoning behind us, some of the things that we're doing, compact building, obviously density and access. You have provided a, an amazing site for us, that's adjacent to, to Amada, and it's an anchor to, to, to West Falls Church. High-performance envelope, geothermal energy, of course, in general, high-performance HVAC system, um, responsible materials, and, and of course, the population that cares, which we talked about just a few slides ago. Net zero is another, uh, is another guiding principle of us, so, uh, one of our tasks is to be able to offer net zero, uh, in the future. Uh, so how do we do that? We make sure we have an efficient building, as we've talked about, limiting the plug loads, which is high-efficiency, uh, systems, and, and make sure that we're using the right equipment, uh, and then ultimately the generation of power. Uh, some of the measures here, which, you know, some of them we're doing, some of them we're not for other reasons. Ultimately, the.
What changes are you doing?
Uh, uh, so, um, HVAC, the, the, uh, V R system, geothermal, for example, uh, we're doing, uh, DOAS unit, the, the dedicated outside air system, occupancy sensors and controls. So we, we, we have a lot of these, these things going on right now. And in the future, I think, uh, the, the client is committed to solar photovoltaics as well to get to the net zero.
Right, right.
So what is our high efficiency and energy efficient building is based on a, a measurement of the E U I, so we, throughout the project, we've, we've maintained an energy model to get to a E U I of, as you can see, in the low twenties, which is, I think, pretty amazing. So allows, allows the client, uh, to be able to get to net zero e- eventually. So, just, some of these are, are, are old, as you can see, we, we have a kind of the trapezoid, uh, kind of transparent out a little bit because it is in development, and, and as you guys, I think it happened at the same night that we were here with you guys. The, the decision that the, the garage was gone, so, uh, so we heard it exactly, uh, like you did. But our, generally, our, our access to the site, we, we talked about, uh, fire department access from the back, so the ability for the fire trucks to get back there and do a three-point turn, um, the through row, which we're calling Mustang Alley, as you all know about. Arrival dismissal is along, uh, the front of the school, which is Mustang Alley. In the next slide, you'll see kind of a more detail of how the school buses will, will align. Uh, M S drop-off is, is roughly what it is today, uh, and A H S drop-off, of course, we, we had worked with the developer in terms of how to do that within the garage. And we're gonna evaluate that in terms of what happens with the trapezoid now that it becomes surface parking. now that it becomes surface parking. So a little bit more detailed in terms of, in terms of the school bus queuing. So if the school bus parks at a roughly third-degree angle, we, we can get all of the school buses along Mustang Alley without having to interrupt the, the Woodorf or, or Plaza, which is our kind of link to everything. And, and the, the school buses are parked like this, so they never have to back up, so it's always, it's always a fun end. Pedestrian circulation, these are just kind of general, we have access to the athletic fields on the, on the far bottom left from the parking lot there, we have the main access on the top right, so the school has the ability to, to, to have ticketed events. Of course, we have access into the building, as you can see there. So, so parking, a big issue. So right now, we have two hundred and seven spaces based on our latest site plan in the area marked there to the left, which is, which includes the existing middle school lot, resurfaced, and then the new lot that we have just in front of the athletic fields. And then the trapezoid, as we talked about, we, we need one ninety, ninety-three to get to four hundred, so we're actively working on those layouts right now, we'll come back to you guys on that. So stormwater management, I, I, I would love for our team, because we, we haven't been able to do that, to, to give an overview of the strategies that we have for stormwater management. I think, you know, we, we have the ability to jump right into the nitty-gritty, which is, I think, really extremely important, but I think also, if we take one step back and talk about our overarching, overarching goals and design principles for stormwater management, that, that's important to know as well. I think Meredith will, would do that.
Hi, Meredith Upchurch with RKNK, I'm the stormwater designer for the project. So for stormwater management, we're dealing with drainage, which is the new pipe infrastructure to make sure we can drain water off the site, and stormwater management facilities to improve the water quality and reduce the quantity of water that's running off the site. So for the storm drainage system, it's almost completely new system in all the areas where we are disturbing. Some, some of the system is reused where we're not disturbing areas in the parking lot and adjacent to the middle school that's, that's staying in place. For the stormwater management to meet the Virginia DEQ requirements for improving quality and reducing quantity, we're using a variety of different best management practices. We're utilizing low-impact development techniques where we can, those are surface techniques that are small-sighted onsite to capture the water where it, where it lands and treat it and reduce the runoff. So we have nine bio-retention areas in the project, five of those are in the front of the school, four of them are on the back of the school. We are utilizing permeable pavement systems, porous asphalt through Mustang Way, a porous grass paving system as well, and we are designing the multipurpose field as a permeable pavement system in that the artificial turf, because it is permeable, the water can flow through there, and we can provide the, the base that's needed to have that function to improve both the quality and reduce the quantity of the runoff. We additionally have a, a filter vault system under the parking lot to provide additional quantity, excuse me, quality improvements to areas that we cannot treat via either the permeable pavements or the bio-retention systems. Is there anything I missed in that?
Is, can we ask questions as we go along?
One, one, one quick thing as I, as I finish up here, thank you. Because the, because the motion, as Gary talked about, is, is fresh, and we, we only read it this evening, like you guys, we, we do have a, a question and a, hopefully a nuance about that as well, so whatever is appropriate, we, we'd like to touch upon that as well, thank you.
You said that the new turf practice field will be permeable?
That's correct.
How is that different? I don't think the, the stadium field is at all.
So the, the artificial turf.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with it, the football field, is that artificial?
Well, it's not artificial turf also.
It is. I don't know how that was, has been treated in the past.
That's why I'm wondering.
It's an old revenge.
Yeah, it's old, and that's why I was, I was interested in it. So it is permeable?
Right, so the system that's being put in place on, on the multipurpose field, it's, the, it's a, the base of it, the water can soak through.
Okay.
So it goes into the base under the surface turf.
And then in that same field that you have in the stormwater and everything, we're supposed to have the geothermal in there. And we still haven't seen any plan on where, how that's going to go or anything. I, I know I asked the last time around too.
So the geothermal field, we know the number of well fields based on the, so we were, there was an initial test well done about a year and a half ago, that tells us the amount of tonnage per linear foot that we're able, is estimated that we're able to accommodate. We just hired the geothermal contractor, so they'll be doing a detailed design. It's a design-build trade. The, the general intent of the area where we're installing the geothermal field is underneath the tennis courts and the softball field, so it is not under the multi-use field.
Oh, okay, because originally, we, I, I think we heard that it was going to be in the practice field.
Yeah, no, what she said is, is in the site plan.
Okay.
Yeah, so on the site plan, there is like a borderline that shows where the intent is for the geothermal field. The very important first thing with designing that system is validating the amount of tonnage per linear foot. And so once we do that, and we're able to validate the exact number of geothermal wells that's needed and the exact depth, that will then determine the exact footprint of the well field. So we're probably six to eight weeks away from knowing that exact engineering calculation.
Is there a staging plan for that, and would that occur in one A or one B?
That'll happen in one B. We were act, we were originally talking about doing it earlier in the phase, but the site's actually very constrained for us, we're acting structural steel. So we're planning on doing the geothermal field after the structural steel's erected.
Is it wise to put geothermal under concrete?
No concerns.
Or asphalt or whatever.
It can, it can go under any number of materials, and people actually put them under buildings as well, it's really not a concern.
And later on, I would really like to hear more about your staging area for the, the project, and what, because where that's going to be located, because it is tight.
So our staging area, for the most part, is where all the new fields are going to go. So we had provided diagrams, I think, that have been made public, we've provided them both the Sunday series as well as several of the school board meetings. Yeah, thank you, he's got a drawing queued up. So the, the area that's all in Lake Gray is the intent of the staging area. So dirt, throughout construction, we're maintaining access to both the stadium and the baseball field, full access, unencumbered, around the middle school, especially as it relates to emergency egress, so that's a concern with us building adjacent.
So you're using the property of the grad center?
We, no, for the purposes of construction, no, we are not. We. Yeah, with the red line around it.
The regular.
Yeah.
Are you really?
Thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, they, if you looked at, from a construction scheduling standpoint, the fields are the last thing that we'll build, so those will get built in the spring of twenty twenty-one. Once the high school is open, then we'll work our way out of the site for completing all the fields.
There's a couple of questions. Also, when I was looking at the site plan, you're going to have to really go down for that whole grade down to the, back to the field to do things. Is that going to cause any destruction or to the track or to the field itself?
No, we have staged our sequencing around the, around the stadium to maintain access at all times, especially this summer because of the amount of summer camps and activities that happen during the summer. We were working closely with Parks and Rec to make sure that the access provided, it's going to move around a little bit this summer. We have some new road, or new, the new sidewalk areas that, that go directly between the stadium and the baseball field that Jack had shown on a previous slide, that's accommodating the new stretcher access. We're actually going to be doing that work this summer because that allows for a much more seamless interaction of pedestrian traffic between those two fields. So when we're doing that construction, we'll, we're, we're either, there's going to be times where the, the baseball field is going to be accessed from where the mulch pile is right now, and there's going to be other times it's where it's going to be accessed around the backside, and it's really going to be on a week-by-week situation, depending on when we get the different work in. But this gives you a good example of, we have a lot of temporary parking that we're going to be installing where all the buses are being moved offsite and the mulch pile is going to be gone. So that's going to provide, once that's open, that will provide another access point into the baseball stadium.
Are the bleachers going to be moved or?
For the baseball or for the?
Oh, the, the bleachers that you were talking about were for the.
No, we're not touching the stadium at all. All we're, the, are, we sort of, a couple of points where we kind of touched the stadium, we have the stretcher access path that's between the baseball and the stadium, and then we also have the tunnels that'll be coming out from the future high school. And that work, we'll start that con, concrete work, will happen probably early fall, but it won't be open for quite some time, the, it won't open until the high school opens in January.
I just saw something about the bleachers and couldn't figure out which part of it.
Yeah, we won't be touching the stadium bleachers at all.
I didn't think so, thank you.
Just real quick on the stormwater, I was down at the Wharf on Friday, and I noticed that they use permeable asphalt on their bike paths. I was just wondering, is that option for us?
That's the material that's proposed, yes.
Great, okay.
Just one more question on the artificial turf. So I just was looking at it online, and so I think our current field, and this is what I remember, it, it, the water goes through it, it kind of holds onto the water, and then slowly it goes out the side, so that infected that that building?
That, that is how it will function, yes, there are drains.
So it's not like filtering any water, it just kind of holds it for a while and then lets it go?
Well, it, it, it does provide a filtering function.
Yeah, but it seems pretty even passive.
It, it is, but it does provide some pollutant. It functions the same as impermeable pavements, the way the pollutants are filtered in those systems as well.
Couple of years, right?
Right, I just, we don't do that, I mean, we're not going to touch that field until we have to rebuild them. So I, I just don't, do we?
As long as it keeps functioning?
Our, our person, do we consider that to be part of stormwater management? Do we consider that to be a filter? I, I would say no.
Well, just like permeable pavement, as she said, the difference with permeable pavement is you do have to maintain it, you have to vacuum it out.
Right.
But you don't really have that on the asphalt because you're not putting sand on it or anything like that, so. It's, it's an allowed practice.
Okay, well, it just doesn't seem, it seems like after a time, the sediment would build up, and it would no longer be doing that. But that might be why we have to rebuild them so often too, because they stop draining properly.
Well, how old is the existing football field then?
Two years.
We just redid it.
Two years, it's very new.
But they, they only have a lifespan of like ten years, and it's the, they wear out from use more than anything.
We, we just redid it a couple of years.
Why do I imagine, once the sediment builds up, the water starts to stand on the field more?
Where is the sediment coming from?
From, any water has, usually run off past some sediment.
So it was reconstructed two years ago?
Yes.
The surface was rebuilt.
Resurfaced.
Resurfaced, not the, yeah, the platform was, it was just.
The technology on the synthetic fields has evolved a lot in the last ten years, I would say.
Well, it's about fifteen years old.
Well, I, I know, but it, but I just, unless they're being built specifically to filter, it doesn't sound like it is, it's being built to absorb the water and release it slowly so there's no standing water. It doesn't sound like they're actually being built that way.
But permeable pavements don't have a filtering function to them.
Oh, I know, and that's why both the time they don't work that well after a while either. Nor do French drains when people don't clean them out, so.
I think, I think it's, it's important for us to, to note that just like the high-performance building and, and the mechanical systems, there will be maintenance involved, and, and that's what we've been working with FCCPS to kind of understand all of those things. The bio-retentions need maintenance, I don't think anybody's under illusions that, that once we've built it, you can, you can keep it, you know, like that and untouched. So we, we totally agree that, that, that being able to maintain these things is extremely important for the life of the building.
And just a clarification, on any of the stormwater systems, much of their credit comes from the water that just goes straight into the ground and doesn't run off, so it's just purely keeping that volume out of the system that then is, provides the treatment, so.
I understand that, but with the artificial turf, technically, they're usually on a very hard-packed clay surface that does not allow water to absorb, so that's why the material is made to soak it up and then let it go slowly. So it's a different kind of system.
Are we can, on the foundations and footings, are we including the grade beam as well?
Yeah, I mean, if, that is a type of foundation system, so this should be for the footing, to us, whether it requires clarification, foot, footings and foundations would include foundation walls and grade beams.
Did staff understand that? I don't think it's a big deal, but. Do we have any other questions?
Could we clarify something else regarding this one B?
Yeah, that's right, I'm sorry, yeah.
So just, I know everyone's very concerned about making sure that the clarification of exactly what we're authorized in one B is specified. I just wanted to point out that there is some utility work that needs to happen in that initial, and I don't know if the intent was to exclude that work or whether it wasn't under the jurisdiction.
Let me make sure, in one A?
In one A, I'm sorry, in one A. So for example, there are utilities that are impacted at the concessions building, so we will be reworking both the sanitary and electrical feeds for the concession building is the, one of the first things that we have to do in order to maintain service to the concessions building. So I don't know if the intent was to attempt to exclude any utilities the way that this definition was written.
No, I, I, I think we were trying to come up with a list in a, in a collaborative fashion, and so we had contacted your team and gone back and forth a couple of times, at least through Noonan's office. And so we'd come up with that list with, working with Daisy, and so I, I assume it had been shared, and, and so.
I hadn't seen it unfortunately.
I, I mean, I, I think we're flexible here, I mean, we can add that to the motion if the planning commission would accept that, and that would clarify that, I think that's what we're trying to do here.
So my suggestion would be to add site demolition as well, because it references construction fencing and rough grading, but it doesn't specifically mention the amount of demolition that we'll be doing on site, because we'll be taking down things like light poles, removing bleachers, removing hard concrete surfaces, those kinds of things. So I just want to make sure the expectations are clear of the scope of work that we'll be performing. So site demolition, and then I guess we could figure out what the wording, and a minimum would need to be reworking of utilities. Or we could specifically say utilities related to the concessions building if you wanted to be that specific.
Yeah, just to give you guys, if you want to look at the, the screen, there's an existing line that is going diagonal here, so that obviously is our big dig. And then there is a, there's a transformer right around this area, which is of course pretty close to where we're operating, so we're going to be moving that as well. So these are some of the, the major ones that we see initially. What utilities are we speaking of?
There's a sanit, yeah, there's sanitary and water to the concessions building are both impacted by our excavation.
Electric, you said?
Yeah, he said besides electric, yeah.
So if all those utilities are related to the concession building, and we could just see utilities related to concessions building, whatever they may be.
And this doesn't affect this stormwater pollution prevention plan? My concern is not about these small utilities, but how it's part of a larger system that we're trying to sort out in over the next month or so, so I don't want to like, I, I don't want to approve utilities that are part of this larger system and need to be part of the, the SWAP, so I, me.
No, and my expectation is by, well, we will have reviewed and approved by staff, the final plan by mid-June.
That's what we're thinking, yeah, within three weeks or so. And the, the utilities, utilities we're talking about for the concession stand are existing water and sewer and electric, and we're tasked with maintaining that concession stand operational throughout the construction. The only way we can really do that is to get those utilities that are within the excavation footprint of the high school relocated enough to maintain that service, but it's really independent of all the new utility design associated with the high school.
Okay, it's existing.
I'm sorry, I'm s, I'm sorry, I'm still not clear on staging. Um, maybe, so, don't blame me yet.
Are we approving staging now?
Well, so let, when, um, Jack has provided, this is, um, these are graphics that I've shared at some other meetings. I'm not sure if I've shared these with planning commission or not. Have I ever done this presentation?
It was part of the attachment from staff.
Okay. So I can just walk you quickly through the, the site obviously changes as we're building and as the school year evolves. Because we've tried to be very strategic about the disruptive type of activities happening during the summer months. So the graphic before you is the first summer when we mobilize on June fourteenth. So the shaded area behind the middle school and behind the existing high school, will that red line, some portion of that will be fencing that will surround the entire parts of the site. In some places, we're tying into existing fence lines, so it's not entirely new fencing, but the entire site will be surrounded with a construction fence. Our construction access, oh, this is just the parking plans, right?
Yeah.
So we have two entrances into the construction site, one that comes off School Road and comes in the end of where you see all those parking spaces. That will be one entrance into the site, that's actually, um, this is going to be our least used entrance, there's a couple of times we need to get up here. But this is one entrance. The second entrance, we have construction traffic coming in through the site, coming around and coming in right about where the tennis courts are. And this one maintain, be, is maintained as our primary construction access for the first year. During the first summer, we're also putting in a bunch of new part, temporary parking spaces. So if you remind, remember, this is where the buses are currently parked, so not a very efficient for cars. We'll be grading this area, providing some supplemental lighting for safety. And the goal is basically to just maximize the number of spaces that we can get in here for surge parking for the school. So at this point, you can see what the footprint of the high school itself is, the majority of our phasing and staging will be happening within this area here. Because of the size and the height of the building, there are times where we will need to do crane picks as well as concrete pumping from this corner. That's why there's this little triangle up here.
But with the removal of, of dirt and things, it's all coming out that way.
It's all coming. The majority of it's going to come out this way. We are working around camp schedules as well as the developer is installing all their dry utilities over the summer. So there may be times when we come out this road as well, but our goal was to come out this way as much as possible.
I do know if it was going to be coming out the School Road or the, you know.
Our goal is to avoid using School Road, except for when logistically, it's just the only way for us to really accommodate doing our work.
And where's the, where's the crane going to be?
Well, we have mobile cranes that'll be serving the site. We have two crane picks on this side, one will be located here, one will be located here. So there'll actually be a crane road that'll go throughout the site. And then we have a secondary crane location on this end of the site. We have a really large trust that supports the school classrooms on the upper floors. So we need to do a portion that pick from a crane located here. That gets us until the following summer. In the following summer, we've arranged with both the schools and with Parks and Recs, that the middle school will be offline for the next two summers. During this summer, we completely rebuild this entire parking lot. So we'll still be using it for construction access to come in here. We'll actually be moving our construction access further down to the middle, which you'll see why in a second. So we, at that point, maybe have a little bit coming in here, but once the building's open, except for walking in the front door, there's not any great ways to get materials in. So really, our goal is, this is what's creating the new loading dock to the new building. So once we get that in, it's a real convenient way for us to get the rest of our deliveries to the site.
I know you've been through this with the schools and everything, but of course, all that access is going through the new little playground area.
Over here.
Yeah.
During construction, the first year, we're providing a temporary play area for the middle school students that's located in this area right here. If you can see, our fence has actually stepped back from the face of the middle school. So we'll be providing a play area here. When school comes back the following summer, the new loading dock will be opened up, so they'll have the ability to use that loading dock area at that point for recess. We moved our, so our construction entrance you saw was over here on that first. We've moved it here, that basically is the entrance to what's the new Mustang Way, Husky Trail. So at that point, this becomes our predominant construction entrance for finishing the high school. So we're still, as you see at this point, none of the fields are built, we're still using this as our staging area to keep separated from the schools.
Thank you so much for going through it, because I wasn't, I wasn't seeing it at all.
I got another year left. When we come back, the school is open and so now all the pathways are open around the school. The real big thing for the high school is that the new promenade is installed, so that new promenade at the back to access the stadium. That'll become the new pathway for getting both to the stadium and to the baseball field. At this point, our fence line has shrunk to this red line here for us to complete the fields. And this is where we're in very close coordination with the developer, because at this point, they've started demolition of the existing high school. In the summer months, they will be giving us our portion back. So this area will change now because that will need to capture all that trapezoid area. So our goal is when school's out, around June sixteenth of twenty twenty-one, we will be finished with all of the site work in this area by August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. It's about fifty-eight days, I think, we decided.
Well, it doesn't rain.
We'll be working some late nights, I'm sure, but our goal is to have that completely finished. It really needs to be, it's not something that's very conducive to have offline or try to do when school's in session, so. That's what we have planned to do. And then at that point, my, my team is done, the developer will obviously still be on site doing theirs, but all of the park, the four hundred parking spaces and all the circulation, as well as all the new fields, will be online by September twenty twenty-one. And then the magic happens, right?
Thank you so much, because it was, I was not getting it at all.
Welcome.
Public comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm saying there are the people, I don't know if there's anyone in the public that wants to.
Yeah, no, it's a public hearing, I just make sure.
Yep.
Have you, you guys asked any, all the questions you, you want? I mean, I, I personally would be interested in understanding the schedule a little bit more, not just the phasing, but you know, how it's going to, how it's going to flow and, and, and when we're closing in and those kind of, just to understand how this is all coming together.
Sure.
Somewhat of an area that I work in, and so I just want to get a better se- sense of it, because it feels highly coordinated and tight, as schools typically are.
Yes, they are.
So I would be interested in seeing a little bit more of the schedule, I don't know that it needs to be a.
I'd be happy to provide our, our full schedule. I mean, in general, the, you know, the summer months are very focused on all the excavation and doing the foundations, getting ready for steel. Steel erection starts by, I think by September one, I'm trying to, we've been moving around some dates a little bit. But through the fall, we'll be installing the steel and then immediately be following behind with enclosing the building. The building is dried in by April of twenty, how do I get my years, make sure I got my years straight, by April of twenty. At that point, that's just rough dry-in, that's not with all the, the brick facade, the brick facade will continue up through the fall.
Just temporary protection, not like, you're not going to.
We're metal stud, it's metal stud backup with shaving, so we'll be fully sheathed and studded. And then we'll be working to put the face brick on, but we'll be fully waterproofed and airtight.
But not windows, you're not putting windows on until after the Mason?
No, the windows, uh, I think I'm, actually, I am, I think in some case, we're, it jumps depending on the elevation, so.
Okay. Yeah, I'd really be interested in the schedule.
Okay, yeah, I'd be happy to provide it.
It'd be wonderful. This is what I do. Okay, any other questions from the commission?
Yeah, I just want to, I want to make a comment. In your introduction, you had green education in there, and since I am the teacher sitting here, always will be. And I really want this to be a learning situation for the kids up at school. I would really like to have a full set of plans for the Kenneth George or one of our teachers up there. Just because there's going to be a lot of curiosity here. And we've got a very good chance to do a lot of career education and everything else, and particularly, you know, the, with the plans and the geothermal. And just the fact that, very frankly, we have a lot of females working on this also, so hey, you know, I'll get that plug in anyway. And with Walter Phillips also, all that work is being done by female engineers. And it's very, very important to get that part of it. I, I'm passionate about it and I, I really think this would be a terrible waste of education if we don't do it.
So we have been coordinating, yeah.
Some speakers coming in and stuff like that. And I know Mary Beth Conley, the vice mayor, will be able to handle it, but I just, I just really, really want it so, so badly.
We are already coordinating with the schools, we've, our team has already done several presentations. Brailsford and Dunlevy, the owner agent, is coordinating all those interactions with the school team, so I know there's lots of plans for different interactions.
I mean, it's going to be much more interesting than the mulch pile. I've spent many days explaining the mulch system to the middle school kids standing up there, they weren't interested, but that's okay.
Can you, can you bring up the parking summary? That's right, here it is. So I just want to understand the final row there. You are in the, this is where we, it was just up there, but so fall twenty twenty-one to winter twenty twenty-two, you're short by a hundred and eighty-seven spaces. And I, the last line, so.
Yes.
I, I, I just.
That's the trapezoid.
It is, so what's, what is that timing and that plan, and that's a massive short.
Yes. So this is prior, this was when the garage still existed and there was this timeframe where the garage would still be on, in construction. So winter twenty-two was the anticipated delivery of the garage. This table will get updated, all of those spaces will be available in fall of twenty-one.
There won't be a deficit?
There won't be a deficit. If you follow the deficit, so the reason we did the table the way we did, we're almost always in a deficit for construction parking and we've made arrangements for offsite parking so that that's not impacting school. The school, the only time they reach a deficit is in spring of twenty twenty-one, and that's when the developers start the demolition. And so the school team is working closely with the development team to identify how many spaces can actually remain on site and how many will need to be taken offsite. So we've just started those coordination, I think they're a couple of months away from hiring the demolition contractors. So once we know the sequencing of the demolition, we can figure out how many of the, you know, there's a lot of parking around the high school parcel. So figuring out if any of those spaces can stay online while demolition's happening. If not, this, this developer is responsible to identify offsite spaces for the schools for any of that hundred and seventy-five deficit that remains in the spring. Once we get through the spring, by the time they come back in the fall, the problem solved.
I certainly hope that the Brad Center won't charge you for it, or charge us for it.
With the, with the new application. With the new application, phase two of the economic development piece, that has moved around now. It used to be.
It's two parts of it now.
Yeah, now it's gotten, right, exactly, it's two parts. But is there space that remains on the Haycock side for them to have parking? Because, you know, they're going to be all over the place, I'm just, because I think that's going to be uninterrupted in the beginning where they're going to put it on. I mean, I know where it was originally, but now it's moving around a little bit for me.
Could I help with that, Gary? Because we just had, we just had a meeting with the developer a week ago, talking about, when you look at the challenge for the developers, that they're doing demolition from two ends. One, to allow for our high school property to have the trapezoid footprint area available for us by June of, of twenty twenty-one. And they're also working from the other end, attempting to clear that portion of the site that they need in order to bring the grocery pad online. So the question is up in what's designated as part of the phase two area, which is the parking spaces in this zone, is whether, when they're doing demolition, is there the ability for any of these spaces to remain online?
Right.
So once we have the demolition plan, we can determine that if it's not safe to provide these spaces during the spring of twenty twenty-one, they'll all move offsite. Then the goal is to obviously have all the parking back online by tw- fall, so it's not an issue. There's just a lot of details to work through the demolition plan.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, that, those are, those are my questions.
I've got one other, I'm sorry.
All right.
We're in the site plan with all the trees and all the, that being identified, everything being removed is strictly on the street, uh, on the school site at this point. There's, we're not going into removal of, at the commercial site.
They're not touching that.
Right, uh, right, um. I was trying to find a graphic, the, the site plan, which is probably the best, so we, we have, we have limited, and you can probably see it here.
Okay.
To, you can see the, the school site and then you can kind of imagine the trapezoid. But nothing to the right of that is, is, we're not touching on that, yep.
Okay, just double check. I just think we need to ease into that for the community.
And we're not approving that tonight anyway, this is, that would, that would be all one B, correct? Or no? We approving trees tonight? No, we're not.
No, no.
Mr. Krasner, let me ask you just in general, I mean, you, you were really vocal about this piecemeal approach. Does the phase, this new, this newer, newer approach, how do you feel about this as well? This new, new plan?
Well, my main concern, and I voiced this offline to city staff, was, I mean, first of all, you know, I think, I think the part of the reason we're here is because I raised the question legally, could we even approve an incomplete site plan? I think the city attorney, reading through the lines, seems to be saying, uh, only if we waive, technically waive a bunch of things, you know, and so I'm going to, is it ideal? No, it's far from ideal. I'll put my faith in the city attorney that it's legal, but is it, you know, certainly is it convoluted? And I think we run the risk of having more issues come up. I mean, right now, we're at phase one A and B. Could there be a one C? I mean, will we be back here in July because some other thing pops up? I mean, it's been, and not that, this team hasn't done an excellent job, this has been a difficult project, trying to coordinate with this, you know, public-private project happening next door is difficult. And so some of the monkey wrenches that are being thrown around, I think, are coming from that direction. But I, you know, listen, I, I think that as far as what we're tasked with tonight, I'll take it one step at a time, I guess.
Yeah.
You know, I, I guess I feel okay about what we're looking at tonight, I mean, I have some bigger picture questions, you know, but, I mean, you know, we'll see what, where we are with one B. I think one B now becomes really the meat of it, to be frank.
Yeah, I agree.
Right.
This is kind of like the appetizer, one B becomes kind of the main course, two is the dessert.
Yeah, well.
Put, put it in a meal, I'm getting hungry, so.
Well, I thought your questions were really, were good a couple of weeks, two weeks ago.
Yeah.
This goes to address the legality part and it breaks it off. And now we're approving something that's, as you said, sort of pretty small, it feels barely, pretty, pretty low risk here, what's being asked of one A. So I just want to get your opinion, because your point's a really good one.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, I, before we move on this motion, I wanted to open it to the public, this is a public hearing as well. Have we received any petitions for anyone in the public to speak?
I have not received any.
If someone in the public is interested in speaking, now is the time. We, we do have, usually we have pieces of paper to fill out, but if you come up and state your name and address, that should suffice. I feel like the answer's yes, yeah, okay, come on up. Got it, got it, okay. Your name and address.
Name and address? Okay, my name is Ian Zula, my address, three oh eight North Lee Street. Um, I go to Mason. My question is, in terms of the like scheduling for the demolition of the old school, what is like the timeframe? And what is like the plan for after it's demolished?
Okay. Do you guys want to handle that question? I mean, I know, I know the demolition is not your scope, but you have better handling the schedule than we do.
That's fine. Not a problem. So the, once the school opens in January of twenty twenty-one, there's approximately a forty-five day decommissioning period where the school will be able to salvage whatever remainings that haven't been moved to the new school and are longer needed. And then at that point, the demolition will begin, there's first an abatement process to remove any hazardous materials within the building, and then the demolition will take place. I believe the demolition is about four months in duration. So the goal is to get the most of the, the demolition done under the footprint of where the new parking lots are going, as well as there is a new grocer planned for the corner of Haycock and Leesburg Pike. And then once the demolition is done, the developer, someone else can speak to the timing with the developer, but there is a mixed-use development that's been proposed and authorized by the city that will put in a variety of buildings for that site.
So the school, the new high school opens in January of twenty twenty-one?
Correct.
Did that answer your question? Okay, all right, come.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Faraz Kumseye, I am a resident, I live on six hundred B Abbott Lane. Thank you for having me tonight. So, um, I, I do have actually several questions. So would you like me to ask them all at the same time? And then, um, or one at a time, what, whatever, I, it doesn't really.
Can you define several questions for me?
Sure. Question is it relates to different areas of, of the plan or the things that you're looking at it tonight? As it relates to phasing, parking, um, safety plan, sustainability, that includes stormwater management, things that have been discussed.
Okay, why don't, why don't we go one at a time then?
Sure, no problem. First of all, I, I wanna thank, um, the team for all, you know, I'm, I've been following this, um, offline, not, not very involved. And then I, and you guys have done a great job, um, with the process and it's not an easy process. So thank you for your effort and thank you for the planning commission. My son will be going next year to Mary Ellen and, and hopefully by the time he's done, he'll be going to the school. So I'm, um, very interested in how this, how this, um, goes forward. But also my other son went to, uh, Mount Daniel while, while it was under construction. And there are certain things that, that I observed and, and I just wanted to reflect on how that could be implemented in this process. So a- as it relates to the phasing, um, what I wanted to understand is, um, you are, uh, the, the team, assuming the applicant is asking the planning commission to approve essentially a, a, is, a defined scope for a certain duration with the expectation that they come back, or that you come back in 60 days or so and ask for approval for the remainder of, of the construction. How does, what if you don't get that approval? How does that affect your scope, your timing? Where are you with your, your subcontractor scoping? I mean, how does that affect all of your process? Because I am concerned that in effect, by going through that process and then if you don't get what, if you don't get the approval, um, then you're, there's going to be some implications. And I don't understand these implications. And then what does that do? What kind of pressure does that put on the planning commission to essentially approve what you're asking for? Because then now, how much leverage do they have really not to approve it? If, if you're saying, well, it is going to affect our schedule. It is going to affect our budget. It is going to affect our scope. And so that is the concern that I have as it relates to what, uh, one of the commissioners raised about the phasing and kind of the pressure that, the expectation that this has to work out. But we know that it may not work out, given that, I don't know how, how advanced are you in the construction drawings? Where are you with your construction drawings as it relates? You don't have to answer this right now, but, but there's going to be changes. It seems that there are a lot, a lot of things as it relates to the stormwater management and other details that I don't know how advanced they are in the drawings and how that's affect. So, so, um, that is, um, that is the phasing, is how, how that's going to affect the, the scope and the price. And as a resident, um, how is that going to affect the budget ultimately? Cause s- some of these things are added to the scope, all of the stormwater, water management issues that, that are coming up are things that I don't know where they are in the design process. So, um, that's, that's number one.
So as it relates, I'm gonna work backwards. So effect of the budget, there is no impact to budget to, um, the city of Falls Church. Gilbane has, um, is in the process of executing a guaranteed maximum price for all of the site work and, um, infrastructure utilities as it relates to this building. So, um, if it is determined through the review process that there's anything that needs to change, that would be at our risk that we would have assumed for the design. As far as the status of how the approvals will affect timing, I think our team feels confident working closely with the city that we'll be able to resolve the remaining issues that are out there that have made everyone uncomfortable today. But I think, I think we're very close. I think in the next four weeks, we'll be able to confidently say that we've all successfully resolved the issues to everyone's satisfaction. So, um, I think the July date, we think is, um, conserve, very conservative. So, um, at that point, we don't believe that this will have any impact to the schedule. We are in the process of finishing construction documents for the project. So those are scheduled to be completed, um, the third week in June.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and so if there, if things don't work out the, the way that, that everyone expects here, what are then the implications?
Well, we, uh, things would be delayed. I mean, uh, the, the goal of, uh, the city and the various boards and commissions is to try to keep things on schedule. I think it's the reason why this is broken into phases. We want to keep the process moving. But ultimately, uh, the planning commission was unwilling as of two weeks ago to approve something that had not gone through the proper review. So we've come up with a solution, which you heard this evening. But ultimately, if phase one B is not acceptable, um, to city staff and to the planning commission, then they'll, things will be delayed. There's no question. So we, we're not expecting that. I'm not expecting that. This has been a long process. There's meetings, uh, all the time. There's another one on Friday morning at 7:30, which you're welcome to attend. But, uh, this has been a well-coordinated effort and there's just been some loose ends that haven't gotten wrapped up, which is why we're still here and having these meetings. The goal is to get it, get all these moving pieces, uh, to come together at the right time. But delays are possible, but we're hoping unlikely.
I, I appreciate that and I understand. I've been involved in many, many, many projects like this in many different areas around the, the, the Washington DC. And, um, unfortunately, I've never seen a project that actually perfectly was aligned. And then when the schedule really drives everything else, then ultimately things, um, in a, you know, mistakes inevitably be hap- happen. And so I just wanted to raise that because, um, it, it is unrealistic to, to, um, expect that there won't be delays. But I, I do hope that there won't be any and I, and I, and I fully support everyone's effort here. The, um, the, the other, the other question that I have is it relates to the safety plan. Can you elaborate a little bit more of how, where will be, um, how is your, how is your construction activities going to affect the safety of the students who are attending, um, the, the school during session?
So the plan is that construction does not impact safety at all for students. Around Mary Ellen Henderson, we are providing safe egress pass out of all access points around the building. Most of those are pretty easy to accomplish. Off these sides of the building, we're providing a walkway and our fence is actually, I think there's a, this drawing here. You'll see that our fence line is held off of the face of the building so that if there's an emergency in the middle school, students will be able to safely egress off, um, this side of the building and be able to get to whatever their muster, identified muster points are. There is some coordination that we're, we've done with the fire marshal for the point where the middle school and the high school are actually touching each other. So we have some egress plans we've developed, um, to provide again for safe egress out of the, out of the middle school cafeteria. The high school really isn't impacted at all by our construction. So really at that point, it's just about maintaining safe, um, construction traffic egress. We're going to great lengths to avoid doing any construction deliveries during early arrival and dismissal. When, you know, within that 30 minute period, there's just a lot of cars and buses moving through the site. And so we'll avoid our traffic moving during that timeframe and do it in between.
Is there a safety plan that, um, the, the public can read?
I'm not sure. The, um, these graphics have been posted, there's a separate set of these graphics that have been posted that show the egress points and some of the other circulation patterns. I don't know if there's something else that you're looking for.
Well, those would be fine. I went on the website prior to the meeting and I couldn't really get to the links.
Okay, so we'll make sure that the logistics plans, there's a companion set of logistics plans. These are actually the, the phasing parking plans and we'll have them posted on the school website.
Be great, thank you. As it relates to the parking, and this is more to the economic development issue, have, have there been a study done about the level of service currently on Haycock? For the, for the parking? And how would the development get impacted at full build out to that level of service? Currently, there's lots of queuing, um, in that intersection. And I, and I, and, and I, I recognize that this is not the right hearing, but I would like to understand, um, or if there is a study, if there's a, a, a traffic, um, analysis that was done. I'd love to be able to review that and, and be able to look at it and understand the traffic impact.
Well, this, this is not the right hearing for that. But let me say that a lot of discussion has been, has occurred on the traffic. The way that the site plan for the economic development piece is a little unique in terms of how it's occurring. And so there's like a preliminary plan and it sort of outlines where things are generally gonna go. But there are numerous steps that have to occur. And part of that is a transportation demand management plan. And that is being developed, but is a major source of discussion for sure.
Understand, is there documents online? Cause you know, in order to, to.
No.
No, okay, cause.
It's not done yet.
But there will be new traffic lights on Haycock.
Okay. Cause you, you know, in, in my experience, in order to do a traffic demand management study, you first need to understand the existing condition and level of service. So you understand how you actually can solve for it. So has there been documentation of existing condition and what the level of service? And maybe this is to, to the staff, that I could read, that document current traffic counts, current level of service? Is it A, is it B, is it, is it F?
There, there's definitely been studied. I've seen it. I don't know what, where these documents are, if it's on.
Gary, wasn't that, yeah, the five, the VDOT study that was done for the, for the rezoning, right? Or the Complan Amendment? The one that Paul shared with me, that's Paul Snyder shared with me.
Yeah. So there, there was one associated with that. And then as, uh, the chairman's saying, though, there'll be a traffic study associated with the, the development of the mixed use project that's pending. But they're not far enough along to generate that yet, so.
I mean, one point, I mean, just, I'm just thinking, I mean, we talked about changes in the last two weeks. I mean, the deletion, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, but the deletion of that signal and the access on the economic development site, that, that doesn't affect the school circulation at all, right? As far as our site plan. I know we're not, it's outside of the boundaries, but we're not, we're not dealing with that as far as access. You know, I guess we don't have a way to, you know, as far as the ability for schools, you know, the buses to leave and head back east into, into, into the city. Uh, I don't know if they were relying on that in any way, if that was discussed at all as part of your, the team's discussion. I don't know, maybe it wasn't, but, um, cause that was a major change that was, along with the garage, uh, that came out of the meeting two weeks ago. So I don't know if that affects, maybe it has no effect on the site plan, which is good for the site plan. But, um, yeah, I mean, that, that occurred to me when I saw that as well. Buses were planned to use that to get out in any way, but maybe they weren't as far as.
So it's not available yet, but it will be made available when it's complete. I'm certain of that.
For the existing condition?
Someone, someone has evaluated the existing condition.
The VDOT study has existing conditions.
I know I've seen it.
Is that online? I mean, that could be put online.
That, yeah, that, I'd have to look to see if that's on there. I mean, it would be associated, like you said, with the, uh, the VDOT review.
I mean, that had it in there, cause I read through that.
Yeah.
And that could be posted, that's a public document.
Right.
Probably is a, it probably is posted, associated with the action on that item. So we have to go back and look, so.
Maybe we could post it on the page for, you know, the, either the economic development page or put it on that, for that provision, for the Falls Falls Church economic site project.
Yeah. There was no traffic study done for the site plan for the schools, uh, in terms of future. And the developer will, will do that future analysis, so.
Thank you, that'd be great if I could see that. The, the last question I have is on the, um, sustainability. I, I couldn't tell, do you plan to pursue LEED certification?
Yes, we do. It, it's actually currently, if you go to the USGBC site and search George Mason High School, uh, we're, we're already on there. So we're committed to that for sure.
Which level?
Gold.
Okay, great. So as, as it relates to the, uh, you mentioned existing stormwater, uh, storm pipes, um, that you might be able to recycle some of the existing infrastructure. Have you've done a, um, existing condition survey to understand their capacity and condition today and how it might take the future capacity?
Are you talking about the water flow or the materials?
No, you, I think you, you mentioned that you're, you're going to be using some, um, underneath the parking lot.
We've modeled the stormwater flow for the entire site. Yes, so we've modeled that all the pipes have the capacity to take the water, the design storm.
The existing pipe?
Yes.
And their condition? Did we camera, did we, did we?
I don't believe there's been an assessment, condition assessment.
I just don't know how old they are. They may not be that old, so they may not.
We're only using a very limited, uh, amount of existing piping in front of the middle school where the parking lot is to remain. And it's not that old. We did not video inspect that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Alright, well, thank you. Alright, uh, are there, are there any other questions? Alright.
Hi, I'm Ian. I live at 300 South Oak Street. And I was just wondering, um, like what the transition would be like for students from the old school to the new school? What the timeline would be like for that? Would it take like a week to transition them over? Would they come back from winter break? As you said, um, it will like open in January. Would, um, would the students just come right in? Or would they slowly come in or, or like, what, what would happen with that?
So it'd encourage you, if you want to see the chaos that happens of a school transition, you're welcome to help us. Maybe we can take some volunteers even. But the plan will be, um, when students are dismissed for winter break in December of 20. As soon as students are gone, we will have moving crews that will come in right behind to salvage all the equipment that'll be coming out of the existing high school. During the month of November and December, all the new furnishings will already be arriving at the new school. So by the end of the year, the, even before you've, um, have left school, the new school will look like a new school. It just won't have all the teachers' belongings. So before the teachers leave for winter break, they'll pack up their classrooms. And then when they come back after the first of the year, the belongings will be in their new classrooms, ready to unpack. And then students will come after that.
Okay.
So everyone will start, we don't know the exact day, cause we do need to work on the adoption of the school board calendar, working closely with FCCPS. But there will be dates that'll be published for that transition, very similar to what was done for Mount Daniel, where there were some transition dates allowed for packing and unpacking.
Alright, awesome, thank you.
No, no. We're laughing about your schedule. Yeah, oh, another one, great.
Yeah, so my name is Alec Outtor. I live at 805 Jackson Street. And so my question is, um, so the school is currently, um, scheduled to open in 2021. What facilities, if any, will not be available on the initial opening?
The only thing that won't be completed at that point will be the parking that is in front of the school. So when you arrive to school in January of 2021, there will be a temporary entrance in this area because this roadway will not have been completed yet. And the, um, we'll still be working on this new softball field, most I use field and tennis courts. So all the new sport fields will be online by August in time for fall practice.
Thank you.
Great. All good questions, anymore? Okay, alright. Commissioners, do we have any questions as a result of what we heard? Are we ready to, uh, make a motion? Alright. If you don't have any other questions, uh, willing to entertain a motion. I don't know how you want us to reference this, Gary, um, since it's gone through so many iterations. But you've already read it. I don't know, had the 5pm version.
Was the one that was in the mail, so.
Is that sufficient? Like per the terms and, but, well, actually, before, let me, let me not, uh, jump ahead. There, there's some adjustments we were gonna talk about, so.
Well, first of all, I'd be happy to speed read the thing if you want, but, um, I, it did seem like there was one adjustment to the version at the, at least one. For under the, one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh, whereas, where we have the three, uh, phases defined. It sounded like maybe if we adjusted that, number one, phase one A is the site area as defined by the site plan excluding the phase two area, but including all unlimited site development and pre-construction activities as follows. I was thinking we could insert site demolition and then the existing construction fencing, rough grading, excavation, foundation and footing, and then add and utility work to service the existing concessions building.
So we need to add site demolition?
He did.
We did that one.
Add it at the front, just cause it'd fit on my paper better that way.
I had it in the other order.
So I think that's what they requested roughly.
So I think if you say the motion as, as presented at the meeting with the, that. Uh, so I think if you say the motion as, as presented at the meeting with the, that following adjustment, that should suffice, right?
Yeah, and then Melissa suggested.
Yeah, we need to read it. Someone needs to read it.
I'll read the whole thing if you guys don't mind, but then before I do, or unless someone else wants to, but Melissa, you also suggested having something more specific about the date of phase two, but I wasn't sure what.
Well, I think basically I just wanted to add, um, after or about July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, and phase two will be reviewed and approved at a, a future date. Just because I thought it left it hanging.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, right.
Um, but I mean, someone else must like the motion, that's fine, there you go.
No, we.
I'll let you speed read it.
All right, here we go. This is how old I am.
Okay.
All right, this is for site plan application number two zero one nine dash zero zero one three, whereas the planned George Mason High School and related campus site improvements provide significant community benefits in providing for the construction of a new high school and adjacent land to provide for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project, a proposed vibrant mixed use development, and whereas the planned George Mason High School project is generally consistent with zoning and the comprehensive plan, and whereas the site plan does not have all information required for full site plan approval, and whereas the planning commission finds approval of phase one A and related waivers will achieve the essential objectives of Division seven site plans, chapter forty eight dash one one three seven required information in the absence of the particular requirements, and whereas the requested waivers for phase one A of the site plan requirements would not be substantially detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of the community, and whereas understanding the importance of the project to the community and the need to phase construction with the academic year, and whereas the planning commission recognizes that the site plan will be constructed in phases as provided for in section forty eight dash one one three nine phase development of the city code with the phases being as follows. One, phase one A is the site area as defined by the site plan excluding phase two area, but including only limited site development and pre-construction activities as follows. Site demolition, construction fencing, rough grading, excavation, foundation and footings, and utility work to service the existing concessions building. Two, phase one B is the site area as defined by the site plan excluding phase two area, allowing all, uh, allowing any other construction building activities. And three, phase two, including all work on the phase two area of the plans for the quote trapezoid area and future parking, stormwater and other related site plan requirements. And whereas the planning commission finds that the following requirements of zoning ordinance section forty eight dash one one three seven should be waived for phase one A only of the site plan as permitted by section forty eight dash one one three eight. The following six items. Number one, item number five, subdivision plat when applicable, if a site plan covers more than one block or parcel, a subdivision plat which binds the properties to the uses shown on the site plan shall be made part of the plan's sub- submittal. Approval and recordation of such plat shall be a condition of approval of the site plan. Two, item number fourteen, a schedule showing compliance with the off-street parking and loading requirements of Article five, division two of this chapter. Number three, item number fifteen, the location and dimensions, vertical clearance and the type of servicing of off-street parking, loading and standing spaces and aisles in accordance with Article five, division two of this chapter. Four, item number twenty four, a separate landscape plan which satisfies the requirements of section forty four dash one oh nine A and other applicable provisions of chapter forty four. Five, item number twenty six, disposition of stormwater drainage and detention systems indicating pipe sizes, types and grades, including all calculations. Six, number twenty seven, uh, existing and proposed sanitary sewage, sewage, sewage facilities indicating pipe sizes, types and grades and where connection is to be made to the city system, including all calculations. Now, therefore, I move that the planning commission waives the requirements listed above for the submission of phase one A of site plan application number two zero one nine dash zero zero one three and approves phase one A of that site plan for the George, planned George Mason High School. Furthermore, the planning commission acknowledges that at this time it is not approving phase one B or phase two, and that the planning commission expects to review the full site plan requirements under phase B, one B, on or about, on or about July fifteenth, twenty nineteen, and phase two at a date in the future. The end.
Can I get a second for that? All right, before we, uh.
You did all the work.
You did do all the work. Uh, before we, uh, take a vote on that, is this app, the as amended, uh, acceptable to the applicant on, especially item seven one or whatever?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great.
Appreciate it.
Um, all right, uh, any further discussion?
Did we ever find out what this email meant?
I, I noodled that email had this document attached to it.
That's what it was, okay.
It was just a.
Forgot about that. Okay, okay, fine then. I, I just wanna make sure.
For the record, that was the seniorities, uh, email about the updated, uh, motion that we just read.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Mr. Holleran, can you take a roll call vote?
Uh, Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Teets?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Wadiska?
Yes.
All right.
Could we also note at this time that the, uh, town hall will be on the ninth of June? When the, we've had series of town halls.
The sun, next Sunday series will be on June ninth, and at that meeting, we will be carry, covering the site logistics since it's a week before mobilization.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, moving on to, uh, item seven A, the planning commissioner reports. Uh, anybody have any reports? Quick reports?
Okay, so I was at the CACT meeting, well, actually like a week and a half ago. Anyway, they, they did a review of our comp plan amendments, the, um, housing, natural resources and demographics. And I have few comments. They're gonna send us a memo on what they had to say. Um, they had a big discussion about bikes not stopping at W O N D crossings, and they're wondering if it might be safer to have a four-way cross stop there so that the cars have to stop too, and that hopefully if everyone has to stop, there might be enough stopping that nothing bad will happen. So anyway, um, they also talked about taking away the stop for bikes and letting bikes cross and only cars stop, but, um.
Bad idea.
Yeah, but from a pedestrian friendly own view, it would not be safe, so. So even if the bikes aren't currently stopping that well, it's better for them to have to slow down, at least pretend to stop when what's going on. So that was, so we might. Anyway, they're gonna noodle with that and, and think some more about how to make those crossings safer. Also, we did talk a little bit about the bus rapid transit, so you know, there's gonna be the B R T line down Route seven. Um, in the city, we are not gonna have a dedicated line, so they're gonna run down the right lane and, and they'll have a, um, ability to change the signal so they can go faster, but like the Fairfax County side, they probably will have extra lane, an extra lane for it. So anyway, that was the big stuff I thought was interesting. Vipas also, um, reviewed the comp plan amendments, um, had, um, Shelley Mastrin come in and present the housing, natural resources and demographics. And I'm pretty sure a letter's coming from them too.
We're gonna do flying cars in Falls Church.
Well, that would help the bike problem, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, any other reports?
Uh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say I went to the signing of the, uh, with the school board and saw the model. I was hoping maybe they'd have it here tonight, but, uh, but it's really, it's one, uh, fortieth.
They had the model at the, um, education foundation, um, event as well.
It's really, it's kinda cool.
It glows. It's kinda cool. Yeah, it's internally lighted.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I have to say, as I walked in and saw it, I said, I wonder how much that costs. It was very festive.
Part of the firm fix price.
On the model they had in the site plan, the trapezoid either, it's just kinda.
Yeah, yeah, they need to talk about it.
No, I didn't talk about that.
Were you there?
All right, Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, very briefly, I attended a forum on Friday at the, uh, Wharf. It was hosted by the Congress for the New Urbanism. It was excellent, uh, forum. They had, uh, Sean Seaman from P N Hoffman, who we've seen on our project. He, P N Hoffman was the lead developer on the, the Wharf. They had the, uh, lead architect from Person, uh, Perkins Peitzman, Stan Eckstet. Uh, I won't go through all the, the key points, but very relevant takeaways, I thought, for our project and, uh, be worthwhile to for all of us, if you have a chance to go down and walk around the Wharf and, uh, see what we like and encourage the developers to do the same when that time comes.
Anything else?
Thirty percent, uh, affordable housing in the applicable buildings, which is all the market rate apartment buildings, and that includes thirty, thirty percent, sixty percent, a hundred percent, a hundred and twenty percent, uh, area median, median income. They paid a million dollars to the city, DC, to develop, uh, work, uh, development program, uh, and others. It's, it's amazing.
Anybody else? All right, uh, Mr. Stevens, Ms. Hockenberry and myself were at the, uh, Capitol Bike Share Ribbon Cutting. I was in the picture, maybe. I was looking down. Um, it was a grand event. Tim was the star.
It was fun.
And, uh.
I had the key.
He had the key to unlock the, uh, bikes. It should, it was a, you know, quick event. The whole thing was, you know, ten minutes, but it was really nice to, uh, get that officially underway and, and participate in that and, uh, as the mayor and, uh, delegate Simon spoke, spoke, it just was, you know, it's a wonderful addition to the city and it's the benefits and the connectivity and something that the planning commission was really involved in, so, uh, uh, and obviously the planning staff was, took the lead on this, so I think it's a wonderful thing. It's nice to see them around, uh, in front of, uh, where I live. The bikes are being used excessively.
Yeah, I was wondering, do we ever get like, um, stats or anything?
We will, yeah. I've seen a bunch. I've seen people riding, yeah.
And I drove by this, uh, high school. They were empty in the afternoon.
That's what I've been doing, seeing how many are left.
I have, I've been seeing the one next to the post office. I've had the most complaints. I've seen several missing from there as well.
Yeah.
But it's funny, people keep complaining we've lost those two spots and it's not convenient, but I don't know anyone who goes to the post office that parked on the side. They all go inside, so.
Well, these are sacrifices, yeah, these are sacrifices, uh, I think the city is, should be willing to make, and I think we supported.
Yeah.
Yes, there may be some parking loss, but the, the gain in transportation connectivity is, uh, to me, makes up for that, so.
Well, I also said we're, we will get data. We'll be able to review it, and if a certain area isn't working, well, we can move the stations. That was what came up a lot too, like can we move them? I said, yes, and we will have data.
Yep.
In fact, I heard they're not even bolted down, so if you can pick up two tons worth of metal, you can move it yourself.
Just need the right tow truck.
Um, all right, uh, that's it for the planning commission's report. Uh, Gary, uh, the planning director's report on you.
All right. On the, uh, back of your agenda, we've, uh, outlined the upcoming items for the planning commission, and I just wanted to just highlight some of those. Tonight, um, the, uh, the rest of the staff's over at the council work session, um, uh, going over comprehensive plan chapters, uh, demographics, housing, natural resources, uh, so they're, they're having a work session on that. In the next meeting that's scheduled for, uh, June third, we have, uh, several action items that were items that you've already seen that are coming back due to the nature of the changes with the, uh, economic development parcel, uh, developer changes. So you will see the, um, subdivision, uh, again, in terms of the subdivision consolidation plat. You'll also see the, um, the land transfer, uh, resolution and the, um, uh, West Falls Church S E E, uh, which is like a special exception to mixed use, um, analysis. So you'll get all those in work session on June third, and the action item will be a a subdivision that we've scheduled tentatively, and that subdivision, uh, should be on that night, if not the following meeting. The following meeting, um, there'll be a repeat of the West Falls Church items, uh, on an action basis now. You've just had the work session on the third. Two weeks later, we'll have them as action items on June seventeenth. And we'll start off with a speaker series, uh, John Hicks. I'm not, I, I don't recall what the topic was on that, um, but we'll, we'll report that next time.
Who is he? No one knows who he is?
Uh, I don't recall. Yeah, I was asking, we were.
I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Who scheduled it? Paul?
Uh, Paul has, yeah.
I spoke to Paul, but I just don't recall.
Yeah, we were, we were.
He doesn't do it in vacations, but.
Yeah.
That's just some guy who just asked.
He's a dude.
And then, then on the seventeenth, we'll also have a work session. That'll be the, on the W O N D trail crossing. Um, then, uh, then on July first, um, we have tentatively, uh, a work session on the George Mason site plan that would be, um, phase one B, and then the Mary Riley Stiles Library Expansion, uh, site plan. Uh, be a work session on that as well, so that's July one. Um, then on July fifteenth, we would have action, uh, was scheduled for the Columbia Baptist, um, site plan and the variance recommendation on the steeple, which is a subject of the work session next. Um, and then, um, action on the George Mason site plan, um, so final full site plan of phase one B, uh, it was, be tentatively scheduled for that. And then on August fifth, we have the, uh, library expansion site plan, uh, tentatively scheduled for a public hearing, so, uh, a, a full summer.
No vacations.
I will not be around.
Vacation, vacation's been canceled.
All right, good. And then just, uh, as a correspondence item, uh, save the date, uh, Friday, June seventh, from nine thirty AM to two PM. The U L I is inviting members of the public sector for a visualizing density tour. Uh, this is Silver Spring, Maryland. Uh, Montgomery County officials are doing a tour of the latest trends in residential design, um, focused on design challenges, opportunities for various construction types, underlying market conditions and different densities of development. Uh, project representatives will be there, talk about their projects, answer questions. Uh, you also hear from the county officials issues they faced in implementing the downtown Silver Spring revitalization projects. And, uh, they, they listed four residential, uh, properties that'll be highlighted. The, uh, Octave, the Elizabeth Square, the Bonafont and, uh, Chelsa Heights.
What's the timing on that, okay?
It's nine thirty AM to two in the afternoon, so.
In Silver Spring?
In Silver Spring, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, are they gonna, are people gonna just meet there or is it gonna be like a city bus?
Let's see, uh.
It's right where I work. I can see it from my office.
They were just saying, um, the cost is free, registration is open through May thirteenth. So we could still, you know, you could still try, um. So I assume when you register, you'll get the details, cause it doesn't say here in this announcement, so. It's U L I.
Or you can crash the party.
So it's just not fun going to Silver Spring.
Never.
So anyways, some visualizing density tour, so if you look up, and that was, uh, all my comments.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Fuller. Uh, there is no correspondence, other than that save the date. So we can move right into the Columbia Baptist site plan. Are we going to, uh, begin with a staff report here or the applicant is?
Oh, highlight the staff report real quick and then, uh.
Yeah, let's do, I think that's a good, good starting point. It's the John Hicks.
He's a catcher for the Tigers. There is, there is.
I just like, John Hicks, you know, the John Hicks.
It's the first thing that came up when I was with John Hicks. Catcher for the Detroit Tigers. I've interested here. Different topic.
Got interested in zoning.
Did you find anything out about John Hicks?
Just that he plays first base as well.
Oh, okay. Have much anticipation.
So, uh, just to briefly, uh, give you some background for the work session, um, the, uh, types of things that, uh, would be actions on the planning commission's part, um, are the ones we like to highlight. Uh, so you have some waivers for the buffer relocation, reduction in the perimeter landscaping buffer width. And secondly, you have some architectural materials selection, uh, items, and then the request for a variance, and that's for the steeple height. We'll be talking about that. That's recommendation of V Z A. Then there's a parking plan and there's modification. We'll be talking about that. That's recommendation to VZA. Then there's a parking plan, and there's modifications and possible reduction requests associated with that. Then there's a transportation demand management, TDM strategies that the applicant has been working on. They may have some preliminary information on that. And the application is seeking to construct a one-story building, approximately thirty-three thousand square feet, expanding the sanctuary to a new sanctuary space that would almost, not quite double, but increase from approximately seven hundred and fifty seats to eleven hundred and ninety-two. And that would also expand the paved surface of the parking, relocate some of the parking and driveway along North Maple Avenue, and completion of landscaping and walkways previously approved as part of the rezoning and subdivision for the site. As we recall, the Snyder property and the historic properties that are along North Maple was subject to a rezoning subdivision and preliminary site plan and some commitments in terms of proffers along those lines. Those have all been reviewed and correlated with this project. This site plan meets those post requirements. I know there's a sidewalk that needs to be built along North Maple that's outside of this project, but is tied to the original rezoning, the proffers associated with that. So what we're looking at is three items for approval. One's the site plan. Second is a variance, and that's for a proposed steeple height of one hundred and twenty-five feet, which exceeds the permitted height of seventy feet. The subdivision is a consolidation of two existing lots into one lot. Whenever we have a site plan that traverses several or more than one parcel, we have those consolidated. We would not be consolidating the historic properties of the residential structures along North Maple, because they're protected under HCC ordinance, and there's a minimum R one A sized lot, eleven thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. Even though these are zone R one B that, that are being maintained, and so those are not being consolidated, but the balance is. The site plan waivers, there's really two main waiver areas. One is for to allow the buffer requirement between the T one and the R one B zones along North Maple Street to be located on the R one B zoning districts. So in other words, the existing T one is where the parking is, and the buffer for that parking is normally on its own site. I'll step back. We have split zoning there, so, you know, we've got that overlay in it. And so what's happening is, is in the back of the residential lots, the parking lot buffer is being placed in the residential lots and, and off the, you know, the T one that normally would be, you know, where you would, you'd be buffering on your own site. But because this is a site owned by the same group, you know, this is being allowed. And this was part of the parameters of the rezoning and the subsequent agreements that were made along those lines. So this is implementing that. We've checked it, and it, it is within the parameters of those previous approvals. Second is the waiver to allow perimeter parking lot landscape buffer. In, in one section where it's all ten feet in terms of requirement, there is one corner that's less than fifty feet in length that it's going from ten to eight point three. So it's kind of a choke point. And so the balance of it is, is being provided at the ten-foot interval. So staff has completed its first review. We've met with the applicant and their team. We've had some discussions on, related to the parking plan, streetscape on North Washington Street, per our city policy, which is new, left turn movement on North Washington Street, bus shelter location. And the applicant intends to submit a revised plan in response to those comments. And we expect to get that in the next month or so. And at the same time, we scheduled this work session to introduce, you know, the site plan to you and to orient you to the, the application and so forth. So one of the things that the applicant has been working hard on is the parking that's planned for this. And they've come up with a chart that indicates what the parking availability is. Usually, we look at what, that in reverse is what the demand is. In this case, they're, they've, they've indicated the parking spots they'll have during the week at peak demand and so forth. And so we've worked through this table, and so it indicates what those are. And the applicant is looking for reduction in parking subject to approval of a transportation demand management plan, which is provided for under the site plan code. And that's kind of newer in our code. And they'll be justifying the level of parking reduction and the TDM strategies that they'll be considering. Some will include shuttle service to the Kaiser parking garage. That, the distance on that garage doesn't allow them to formally count it as provided parking, but it is available, and with the shuttle, it's, 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 you know, within a quick distance. And so it could be counted as a TDM. And then bike share station, a planned bus shelter, and other things that they're working on through the TDM plan, which they will be submitting. They probably have some preliminary further information. This is just based on a discussion meeting we had with them a few weeks ago. We also talked to them about streetscape. Per the adopted standards in twenty seventeen, it's recommended along North Washington Street, as well as Columbia Street in accordance with staff recommendations that they've looked at that. They're interested in providing us the easement widths that are consistent with those sections. But due to their budget constraints and not being a commercial enterprise, it's difficult for them to incorporate the cost of the brick and all the other amenities that go with streetscape. So, but they are willing to consider providing the easements that would be providing for the policy that we have in place for streetscape design. Bus shelter, once again, we've given them the designs on that, and they're, they're talking about the possibility of providing the bus shelter pad. Once again, the, the cost to construct the bus shelter are significant for them. The Architectural Advisory Board reviewed this site plan on May first, and then their comments are pending. We'll have them available soon. And anyway, so the timing on this is, we received the application in March. We're having a work session tonight. We're scheduling July fifteenth, the planning commission's site plan subdivision consolidation action. And we'd also, would do the same night, the recommendation to the VZA on the variance with the steeple height. The variance is only on the steeple height at this point, all our reviews. So we, we see it as straightforward, and you could take action on the site plan that night, contingent on action by the VZA the following days, which is scheduled just three days later. So normally, we like to do the recommendation and then have that, you know, made before you act on the site plan. But in this case, we see this one as straightforward in terms of the variance on the steeple height. So that's the background, the work we've done to date on this site plan application. And the applicant's here tonight. I'll turn that over to them for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Gary.
Hi, good evening. I guess we'll introduce ourselves. I'm Karen White with Walter Phillips.
Brett Flanders, Executive Director of Columbia.
Hi, Jim Frye. I'm a member of Columbia and the Chair of the Building Committee that's been working on this project for maybe a hundred years.
And I'm John Ruckney with Hillbilly Ruckney Architects.
Okay, I'm gonna walk you through a quick presentation. I think a lot of it's gonna be similar, to be similar to what we just went through. So I'll kind of go quickly through some of that. Here we have the site, which I think most of you are familiar with, at Maple, Columbia, and North Washington Street here. And in right here, you'll see the limits of the, the site we're talking about. Here is the, the rezoning that went through about a year ago, that was just mentioned, that was for, that created a new subdivision, a new lot in this location. All this area was now zoned R one B, and everything over here is T one. And this was the parking lot that was shown in that application. Oops, sorry. And here's just a line to show you where the T one, R one B line is. So in summary, you know, we're about five acres. We're zone T one slash R one B. Again, the rezoning was approved in two thousand and eighteen. We are applying for a variance. And the waivers were mentioned. I'll, I'll point them out here on the next sheet. So the landscape waivers, I'll do that and I'll walk through the site. So first, we'll start with the landscape waivers. The, right along here, so the back of curb here is the R one A, T one zone line. So the, this buffer does meet the density and width requirements. It is just on the R one B property, portion of the property, not the T one zone portion. And here is where the ten-foot landscape strip gets a little reduced to about a little more than eight feet. But going back to the bigger picture, so here is the existing church here today. The proposed addition is right here. Today, you'll, you might be aware, there's two entrances. There's one that's probably maybe right in this location, vehicular entrances I'm referring to, and there's one over in this general location. So we are getting rid of this one vehicular entrance and combining it here. So we have one parking lot, and this main drive aisle connects the two. On this end here, we've aligned with James Thurber to kind of make it look more like a full intersection, which is something I think we talked about in the past. The playground today, if you're familiar with today's site, is located in this general area where the driveway's going. That's getting moved closer to the building. So then, when the, the school goes out to play, they don't have to cross the driveway anymore. So it eliminates that vehicular, you know, issue that they have. It'll be right here. Yep, this is where the new playground would be. This, on the other side here, this is actually a rain garden. So this area is just gonna be a rain garden used for stormwater management. You know, nothing really else will be going on in that area. And then we have a hundred and four onsite parking spaces all throughout the area here. As you can see, we have, there's a couple, we'll call them main entrances. Right here is the main entrance, because we have some accessible parking in this location. We also have an entrance here, which is covered. This can take you down to the, the daycare. We'd use this kind of covered ramp entrance down in here. This, if you drop off here, you're lower. You would take steps up to the main sanctuary, which is at, which is flush with grade here. Let's see, along the streetscape here, we are doing, we are providing a ten-foot wide concrete sidewalk, and we have agreed to do the twenty-foot wide easement. We do have street trees here. They are shown behind the sidewalk, and that's because of this water line that runs all down Washington Street, right behind the curb, so it conflicts with street trees. So they would be behind the ten-foot wide sidewalk here. If I keep going, oop, yep.
It's on the top left of the site. What's next to the rain garden?
Oh, these are the three historic homes that are to remain. And we've, oh, and as part of this too. So there is the full sidewalk that will be put through here, and these existing curb cuts will be removed, and these cars will now park in the parking lot. Because these are owned by the church, and they're used by, church staff live in these homes, so.
We didn't get any of these visuals in our package, right? We did, I missed them, because it's much more informative than what we got.
Yeah, right. What we got.
Okay, just checking.
And the sidewalk is still by August?
We could read it on the plans, but it was just a lot of work.
I know.
Okay, I was checking.
Could you explain how the new addition presents to Washington Street? Where's the front?
Do you have elevations of that?
Yeah, we're gonna, we have the whole arc. I'm, I'm not, I'm almost done. Parking summary real quickly. As was shown in the, in your, the report there, it did have the parking, parking spaces provided. So as you may be aware, the church owns that property at three oh one North Washington. They own a parcel across. They own this parcel here where they have parking. They own this parcel right here. And then they have a parking agreement with this property right here. So that's where, if I go back to this chart, the parking agreement, which is in the site plan, it, you know, every, seven AM, seven PM, there's an agreement. It's different times of day, different days of the week, and that whole agreement's in the site plan application. No, that's with the Jenny's property.
Oh, okay, Jenny's.
The Kaiser is not actually shown in this provided, because it's now a public garage, and it's too far away. But there currently is a shuttle that is run to that garage currently. So it is currently being used. It's not officially in this tab right now. So you can see, though, from this, that we meet the onsite parking requirements during the week, during the, the school hours. The only issue, time we're a little short, is during Sunday, where the requirement is three oh two, and we're at two fifty-five. Again, not including the Kaiser garage that has the shuttle.
Is there an agreement with Kaiser?
We had an agreement when Kaiser was first built. We've been parking there since that building first went in. And then whenever that happened a couple of years ago, when they decided to lock it up overnight, and some of the folks at the State Theater got locked in, and some of our folks got locked in. Then we went through the whole process with the city, so that it's available for public use Friday nights, Saturday, and Sundays.
I think that's somewhat unstable. And I think there's a lot of worry about that, you know, just whether we are gonna get to use it. You know, I know there was a contract that, that things have kind of fallen apart. So I was wondering if you were any further along than the city is, but.
We have not been able to get any further with them, one on one, though.
Good, then I'm not gonna be jealous.
Gary, what's the rate in the ordinance, maybe? What's, what's the, what's the parking rate for churches?
One per four seats.
One per four. I mean, one per four is a pretty old standard. You know, I mean, it was at a time when family of four went to church in one car. Nowadays, that typically isn't the case. I know some jurisdictions are thinking about, you know, upping that standard. I mean, I guess the question is, you know, what's your experience in how your parking demand in reality? I mean, there's their standard, and what you're short on our standard, but what's your demand actually been? I mean, you're talking about doubling your sanctuary size with this expansion, which is a pretty significant increase. You're not doubling your parking. So I guess I'd like to know more about, you know, how you think this is gonna work. Do you have enough of these other spaces to justify a waiver of the parking requirement? That's a, is it a variance or a waiver, Gary? Gary, what are we looking at?
Uh, in terms of, it's, it's a variance if you're short, but if you do a TDM, it could be accommodated through that.
Who approves the TDM? We do?
You do.
Whereas I, well, in that, I mean, in that event, then, I mean, I'd like to know a lot more about the demand, like what your experience is. You've been there a long time, and you kind of know, but you're looking to expand in a major way. And, you know, just what we're talking about here. Because yes, the city ordinance is, I guess, the, sort of the minimum. And I guess if you met that, we wouldn't be having the conversation, because you'd meet the minimum, and you'd be good to go, but you don't. So, you know, it just makes me concerned. I have experience working with a lot of houses of worship in the area, and I, I know that parking ratios tend to be greater than, than one space per four seats, so.
What are they, like one for three, or?
One to two, I mean, in our neighboring jurisdiction, I know that it's very common to be like one to two and a half about, about one space to two and a half. Now, you know, now, I don't know if some of your folks ever, I don't know what the on-street parking situation is like, you know, public on-street parking, and if people are parking. I guess what we wouldn't want to see, I mean, the reason I bring it up, is what I wouldn't want to see is areas that currently, you know, don't have sort of overflow issues where people are parking on the street in neighborhoods. I wouldn't want to see this introduce a neighborhood parking problem, where now, on Sundays, where if there isn't one, you know. I, I don't know the history exactly. I don't live in this, exactly in this immediate neighborhood town.
I live a block away. I mean, they manage it well right now on Sundays.
Yeah, we, we, we make sure we have signs.
Yeah, we, we, we make sure we have signs in front of all the streets every Sunday, and people-
When you double, when you double your capacity, and obviously, you know, I'm sure we want the church to be successful and have a, and fill, fill that up, I'm sure you do too. You know, we wanna make sure we don't introduce a parking problem, or we don't have one today.
I only see it on, when you do your trunk-or-treating or your big events, where the parking lots use up my stuff, so.
And we're not talking about Easter or Christmas, your busiest maybe days of the year, but, you know, we're talking about your average Sunday. We wouldn't wanna see neighborhoods now negatively affected that aren't affected today.
Well, we're, we're very, we're very cognizant of doing that. And about a decade ago, we started putting people in front of every residential street that comes off of Maple on Sunday mornings to keep people from parking there. In fact, we had, St. James came over and talked with us how we do that, because they were having a similar challenge, so.
They've been working that out, too.
You guys sent them our way to try to figure out how we were doing that. So we're very cognizant, and we're trying, we try very hard to make sure that people do not park down in those residential streets.
You don't wanna park in.
Would you ever consider running a shuttle to the metro station?
Well, now we have these nice bikes right in front of our place. People can bike from the metro station. In fact, that's what most people are doing now, is, in fact, we've already changed our website to give people directions on how to bike from the metro to our, to our bike station, which is right on Columbia.
And they're Sunday bests.
You know, see, it's a different world now, what Sunday best is. I think both of you have good points of view. I do have to confess, I was on, in church depth in this type of role in the nineties. So that original agreement with Par- Kaiser really gave the original parking agreement with the city, that, with the last addition. But your question is very good about how many people are in a car. You have to kind of understand the dynamics of Columbia. There's a huge segment of people at Columbia that drive from out, way out.
Right.
At sixty-six, and so with those families, you're gonna have a higher average than four to a car. You'll be having a six to, you know, a larger average, or at least four. And then with the addition of the subway, and there's a lot of people now that walk to church, that have been populated the city. Now, I'm probably the bad example, because for, in my household, to succeed marital harmony, we take too many cars to church. Because half the family, half the family wants to be to church on time, and there's one holdout. But, our goal, and this is more from a lay perspective, has been to be a very good neighbor and very proactive in managing this situation.
Good, well, that's good to hear, and I think we would wanna, you know, if you're gonna go through a TDM route, I guess, just, just me speaking for myself, but if you were gonna come to the commission and ask for any kind of reduction by the TDM route, I, I would wanna see that kind of proactive type of plan for, you know, control of, of parking demand, you know, based on your, you know, your projected growth and, and number of folks attending services. You know, I'd wanna see, you know, whatever you're doing today, and you may need to, you know, look at what you do today, and how, how you would manage it, given the increased demand now with the bigger, you know, bigger sanctuary, more people coming.
Well, it's not just the serb worship, though. There's the school there, right? Does there, how do you factor in the?
Well, they meet it for the school, right? Are you meeting it for the school, or no? They meeting the parking for the school?
We are, yep.
As you meet.
And we're meeting, the rate we're using is the elementary school rate, is what we've talked about using, so, which is one space per employee.
If the school issue's more drop-off, which does get a little bit busy, but it's brief, so.
And you're not looking to increase enrollment?
And we hope the new layout, um, we'll hope that, yeah.
Are you increasing enrollment at the school with this? No?
No.
Okay.
Do we see the TDM plan? Or do we see the final site plan?
Oh, yes you will. I mean, do you, do you have any preliminary?
We don't yet.
On that, okay.
So we submit it.
That's something we've talked about and they're working on, so we, we will have that.
But we approve those in a hurry.
Yes. It, it is integral to the, the approval of the site plan.
Yeah, I was thinking we'd, we'd submit it with the site plan, as a, with it, yeah. So just real quick, I'll just, so that's parking, just, these are some of the things that were mentioned that we're, that we're gonna do. We're gonna consolidate the parcels. The, the two, it's two parcels, one that's on Washington and one the larger church is on today. We're gonna have a, we agreed to grant the twenty-foot streetscape along Washington Street for any future improvements the city wants to do. We will work with staff on the bus stop location, and we'll do the grading in the sidewalk way that the shelter could be put there. And, again, work on TDM to address parking. And then, the one thing I was gonna show you that we did agree to do too, is we got some comments from staff about, this is Maple Avenue and James Thurber, about kind of putting in nubs here and kind of making this feel more like an intersection, because there, you know, there's street parking here and here, so we have agreed to do that. So I just wanted to show you that, quick change that we've made so far.
I think the sidewalk was supposed to go in by August. Is that still on schedule along Maple?
I don't think it's Aug, it's-
It is August, yeah. That is the schedule for it, under the proper-
The very first thing we would have to do on this is that whole section of the parking. So that would be the very first, in fact, we've always been, the Snyder's are working on their portion, and we're trying to see if we can get it, if obviously approvals are lined up. Get it all done at the same time.
Okay, now I'm gonna hand it over to architecture.
Oh, just that? All right. Let me go back one. This first elevation, and we just have these preliminary elevations right now. This is the elevation along North Washington Street. And this is actually something different than what we showed the Architectural Advisory Board, because they made a comment that this wasn't as broken up as it is on this drawing. That those two kind of pieces there was one big piece, and they said it was kinda like a one big long wall of, of no relief or anything. So what we did was we, we've, we've broken this up into, into pieces. Starting from the, from the right is the existing building that's ahead toward Columbia Street. And so, there's a, there's a portion of the building that sets way back there. And then, the facade runs along the road, and it starts out lower, and then it jumps up, and it's a little higher with these two other forms. And then, there were three doors along, three doors to get in the building along this wall. We took one of them out. So there's just one door. That's really an exit door from, because if you look at the plan, this is really backstage. This is behind the sanctuary. So it's, it's the front door to the city view as you go by, but it's the back door functionally of the building. So we're trying to make it look as, as attractive as we can.
This looks better, much better by the way, than what we saw at the Architectural Advisory Board meeting.
Yeah, thanks. So, and then the other thing we, we tried to do was, was we, we inserted kind of across the middle of this. Most of the building is gonna be sort of this warm, kind of tannish brick. But we wanna insert a, kind of a band of the brick that is closer to the color of the, of the church, of the existing church. So that band will come around, go into the driveway, and then over to the left there, it, it will be this, in line with the canopy that goes around the, the steeple. So, going to, whoops, sorry. As you come around, oh, that's great. The top of, the top elevation here is, as you come around the corner, the, the steeple is at an angle, it matches the, the one angled wall as it comes in toward the driveway. And this is really what you see as you're coming out of downtown, because right before you get to the site, you're kind of, Washington Street is sort of pointing right at the chapel, and then kind of breaks off to the right. So, so you see that, even though it's kind of internal to the site, you still really see it from, from, from town.
So that's on Washington, that's the-
This is actually turned in, this is actually, this view kind of like this, if you will. Okay, when you come out of town, the, the road is here, and then makes a slight right turn. So as you're coming right out this way, you're seeing this elevation of, of that top view of that. And the bottom, the bottom drawing is that when you, if you come in more into the site, and looking at a straight from this side, the steeple is, is turned where it reaches here. And then this other wall on the, on the left part is, is this wall in here. The front of our building is really internal to the site. Our front doors are in the middle of the site. So we have the, you know, we want it to be inviting to the people that are on the site and parking and coming to church, but at the same time, as you go back to that other drawing, we want it to be, you know, inviting to people as you drive along, along Washington Street. So the materials are all warm. It's a, it's a combination of this tan brick, and we're gonna do some of the red brick. The steeple roof will be kind of a darker metal. The metal panels that are kind of in between those two forms along here, and then they occur again as you come around the corner, is kind of a light beige-y color. The top of the building is sort of, it's, it's going to be EIFS, but it's, it's set back from the outside walls all the way around. So it's just the upper portion of the roof will be EIFS, but it'll be set back. And the elevation doesn't do it justice. Next time we'll show you more of a 3D view of this. But that, that top piece there on the elevations is really at an angle and set back from, from the facade of the building.
How tall is your existing steeple?
We looked at it about, depending upon which plan to look at, and, because they didn't do them very well back in the fifties, right around ninety to ninety-five feet.
Okay, so that would be, that would, that would come down, that steeple's gonna be down.
That'll come down. The tower, the, the base of it will remain, you know, because there's room there, and then that steeple will be, will be taken down. The steeple across the street at Crossman is a little taller than in ours, but then this one's gonna be taller.
It's a little bit taller.
The Architectural Review Board, I'm glad, I asked Mr. Stevens, but I'll ask just for the record, the Architectural Review Board have any concerns about the height?
I don't think they were concerned about the height. Their big concern was the Washington Street facade is what they were.
Very much, very much.
Will the steeple be lit?
The, the windows will be lit inside. Those upper windows will, will just be lit up.
Just wondering, will it be visible now, like, further away than it, probably a little bit, I don't know, that's a major concern. I guess the BZA will hear the variance, it will.
A little block away, I've never, never noticed the existing.
Yeah, this one's gonna be, this one's gonna be much taller.
If you put a 305 up there, that'd be better.
Well, this one's gonna be further towards Washington Street.
I mean, there aren't, I mean, there aren't any residential-
No, there's not. There's not.
Closest one would be their houses, and then there's their father's house.
So coming in from-
We'll see what they have to say.
Coming in from Marley, what would you say?
Well, you see first is the, is the existing old church. As you come past Columbia, and then you'll, you'll, you'll be presented with that facade on your right as you drive by it. So as you go past it, you go in our driveway, and then you'll see those other, those other big ones.
And what are the planned uses of the old church, or the old sanctuary?
The, the current sanctuary, so right now, the building that's up on the corner of Columbia and North Washington is a chapel. It's two-hundred-and-fifty seat.
Right, right.
The current sanctuary, which is roughly seven-hundred-and-fifty, is in, is in the main center part of the building. That's going to be cut back. The balcony is going to be repurposed for children's space. The space under the balcony is gonna be repurposed. So that will become about three-hundred seats as well. That will become the chapel. Our current chapel will become our youth space, so that that's where they're, they're currently over in our 301 building. So we're trying to get everybody back onto our, on campus, because it's challenging having people all over the block. So if we can get them back into there, the youth will be right up on the corner there. And so all the continue, the uses will continue as, pretty much as is, other than the youth coming back over.
So if you're no longer gonna use the 301 building, could you not use that for more parking, to beat some of your parking issues?
Well, I think we're already using the parking for-
Well, I meant this, I don't know if this, does the structure have, I don't know, would that look like it was just an old office building, maybe, dentist or something?
Yeah, it's an office building, three levels, nineteen-seventy or so.
I'm just wondering if it's worth it to, like, put some kind of parking there or something.
We, we, a, a lot of it just comes down to cost. I mean, we could level it and put a parking, but I don't think anybody wants more surface parking if they can. But, some of it too is, we have a, the Columbia Institute of Fine Arts does music classes, and having those in the building can be a challenge during the week, because they're noisy. They take, you know, you have a euphonium, so we may move our, our Institute of Fine Arts over to that building, because then it'll all be commerced in one place.
It'd probably be easier to find, sometimes finding the clusters.
Right, and that's the hard part, is you get lost in a building.
I've wandered around, we're looking for a cluster.
I get lost, and I grew up in the church, so.
You know, over the years, there've been all kinds of different things that have been talked about for, for the expansion. And so I was rather surprised just to see this, because there, there've been times when there was gonna be-
Seven stories.
Yeah.
On Maple.
All kinds of stuff.
So, if someone's coming from downtown, northbound on North Washington, and they're gonna get to your parking, how do you anticipate most people will do that?
Coming northbound on Washington from, from Broad, you're coming down, coming down Washington, you'll turn left into-
Off of Washington mid-block, where it's gonna really screw up traffic.
Well, it's either that, or they come around the block and they go down Maple, and I, a lot of our neighbors are trying to get traffic off of Maple.
Karen, is the increase, well, I guess this is a by right use, right? So I was just about to ask, the increase in, we looked at the rezoning, does the increase in trips, does that justify any kind of operational analysis or traffic study? As far as the need for turn lane, or?
Yeah, 'cause it's also, I mean, it's like quadruple yellow line, whatever that means on the street, which I, I think is still a legal turn, but.
Was there any look at that from city staff?
I mean, we, we talked about the, the left turn onto, going northbound on, uh, North Washington is actually shifting from its current location. But site plans, we don't have traffic study requirements. And so that was one of the things that we talked about, and we talked about improvements to that, uh, the exit on North Maple, in terms of trying to make that intersection kind of function a little better over there. So, that was the extent of our discussions on it.
Are you trying to look at North Washington Street as a whole, from Broad all the way on up to the city line? Because there's gonna, there was also some other plans, you know, with the inside.
Yeah, down there. I mean, in terms of traffic studies, with site plans, we don't get traffic studies, so.
When there's some comments from the transportation planner or engineer, they don't get, any comments from, where our transportation folks are these days?
DPW's, uh, has some new staff people that are looking at transportation aspects, and I'll have to look at the, uh, the comments we got from them to see what, but anyway, so I'll let you continue on.
Are you gonna have more services on Sunday than you do today? I mean, you anticipate having, I don't know, I don't know how many you have, that you probably have multiple.
Right now, we have, in English, three services on Sunday morning. We have another service on Saturday night. We then have a Hispanic, a Korean, Vietnamese, and an Arabic on Sundays, but spread out through the day.
How many totals are there?
Six or seven.
So you anticipate more, or just you're gonna have more?
Probably fewer, because we'll be able to consolidate probably from three to two on Sunday.
How many spaces do you have currently?
No, I don't have the number really easy here, but I can get that for you. I can, I can get back to you.
Okay, so, the number of spaces is definitely going down though, right? I mean, we're going, we're going, expanding the sanctuary, and we're decreasing the parking. But we're providing it to off-site, or not on this lot.
So I looked at the DPW comments, and they were only addressing crosswalks and so forth. They didn't talk about any kind of traffic movements or, or other.
And there's no landscaping waivers except for that eight-feet? And there's no landscaping waivers except for that eight feet from ten feet up in that one corner?
Correct, that, yeah, that one little corner, and then how the buffer's just on the other zone, and there's about a hundred and fifty spaces today.
So, I have a question about the buffer being on the other side, maybe I'm just not thinking about this right, but, um, I wasn't in favor of this plan, because I don't think it's appropriate to have a parking lot so close to those historic buildings, I think it detracts from the historic nature of them. And I, I think that ship has sailed, but for making it even worse by letting you put your landscape buffering in the backyard of these historic houses that aren't supposed to have parking that close to them anyway, um, that's making me like it even less, so is, is that allowing you to put the parking spaces that much closer to the houses? Like, to me, it seems like the buffer is in the transition zone on purpose, not just because, hey, you might not own the adjacent properties, but because the transition, the buffering is supposed to be in the, I don't know, Brett's might be there this time, but.
No, you're correct. I mean, the, the way the code has worked is that the buffering has to, if, if it was a commercial property, which this is kinda is, cause it's T one, it's, it's, their buffer's supposed to be on the property. But we did make sure that the T one line was forty feet from the house, which is like the zoning center. Exactly, but, but still. But the buffer's in that forty feet. Right, within, within the forty, it's not supposed to be. I mean, obviously, they know that because they're asking for a waiver, so.
Yeah.
And, and typically, we don't do that.
Typically, which the waiver.
Concerns are historic houses?
Yeah.
The historic houses are supposed to be on a, whatever, R one A lot.
Well-reserved R one A lot.
Have a full backyard and everything.
Yeah.
Because we split, it's this awkward thing, if the lot is a full-sized lot, but we split the zoning so that it's transitional halfway through, so you could put that parking up there, which you couldn't do if you just had the R, where they lot. So, I, I, I live in historic houses, and I feel like, you know, we're pretty lax on all these stor, historic things, which maybe someday I'll appreciate when I wanna do something terrible to my historic house, but, uh.
I guess we'll have to let you.
And those, those houses are parked from the back too.
Yeah, which, you know, it's fine, they're, they're a little bit weird, and, you know, they point out they've saved them, so that's nice, but, um, it'll definitely damage their characteristics to our buildings to have that part of everything.
Yeah, it's not nice. Hey, um, I could find a list of the trees being removed, but I've never been able to find a list of what's actually being planted in plant-wise, with the buffers and all that, was that in, was it in that big document? It's in the sheet. Because I didn't find the page. Yeah, it's sheet, uh, I think it's twelve oh four.
They're removed.
Yeah. Actually. No, I can keep finding them removed, I found them removed. Twelve four, twelve oh five might actually list the tree. Yeah, I'm, I don't know, what we have. Yeah, here we go, twelve oh five is the planting plan, so that's the one that, the sheet that lists the actual trees. It's just hard to see. Don't worry, you guys go on with other stuff while I find it.
Uh, do we have other stuff here, um?
Could you go back to the, uh?
We're, we're reaching our, uh, vote time here, right?
Ten thirty?
It, it is ten thirty, we need a majority.
Turn into.
We're gonna turn into pumpkins.
I mean, I, do we have other stuff we are asking, other than, uh, Lindy, are you?
No, I was just wondering where are, that all the parking, you've got Jennings and where else?
Uh, so, so there's the corner piece up there. So, the piece on the corner, right across from, um, right at Columbia and Washington, is actually, is a parcel owned by the church, that small rectangle, and the, next to that.
And that's on Park or off?
Columbia and Washington.
Columbia, so it says church-owned parcel B, that, that's, that's church-owned. And you have the Jennings parcel, which is where's the shared parking agreement, which is in your site plan, if you wanted to look into that, and then, um, and then the three oh one North Washington is the other property we were just talking about, the office building.
I mean, for me, I, I, I'm interested in the transportation demand management, I mean, parking's the biggest concern for me. Um, I'm, I'm not worried about the, the buffers as much, that's, that doesn't cause me any trouble, I, I, I'm not worried about the steeple height, really, it's, uh, I, I think it'll enhance the church, not, not diminish the city, and it looks really well designed to me, and how it, how it faces the road is, you know. I, I'm not concerned about that part, I'm concerned about the parking, so it, that's really, if there's any guidance, uh, to be given at the work session here, for me, it's to understand how that's all gonna work, how we're expanding, as we said, the sanctuary, but maybe reducing the parking and how all those pieces interplay, I know you've given us some charts, but, uh, that's, that's my point of concern, honestly.
It's also, arrangements could go away, I mean, these are private arrangements, I guess you've worked out, but those properties could change hands, the owners could just decide, nah, I don't wanna do that anymore, um, for whatever reason. Um, and so, you know, I'd be concerned about proving a contingent on this offsite parking that could go away. Um, so the TDM side of it, or whatever, needs to be, you know, I think, well fleshed out, um, yeah, so I, I'll just second what the chairman just said, that, that, I think that's the primary concern is for me.
Okay.
I, I think I'm, I'm happy to see that, uh, that they are looking at a TDM, it's part of the way that we should be going, yeah, try to get people out of cars and, and, uh, use other forms of transportation in our walkable urban community. I was mainly concerned about the, um, Washington Street elevation, they seem to have, you know, taken some steps to, to make it more pedestrian friendly out there, so, uh, I think that's the piece that the city will see. And, um, so, I guess I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's right, as, as a commission, I'll speak for myself, but as, uh, me specifically, I'd like to see people reduce their, you know, transportation footprint and through other methods, so, uh, we have been very, uh, open to those kind of arrangements in the past, uh, but it's gotta make sense, that's it.
Yeah, I can read, but I was looking at the top.
Did you find what?
Andy's driveway.
Give you twenty bucks, I'll give you twenty bucks. Bargain, bargain all day.
Melissa, did you find what you needed to?
Yeah, I did, it's just, you know, it was at the bottom of the page, and I guess I just didn't see the chart.
Okay.
I found it, that's why I said move on, because I knew I'd find it eventually, but that's a page number.
All right, well, then, if that's, uh, it, I think then we're good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you, I know, I just found it here. We didn't take your vote, Brett, I figured we were wrapping it.
Ten thirty we need to go, I suppose we're at thirty.
Eight minutes, eight minutes passed, this meeting is in doubt.
I fell down on the job, I should've been on top of that.
It never happened.
That's your job.
You wish.
Let's wait till we, one day we get a vote to end the meeting.
I'm, I'm, I'm fading, so it's, uh, good.
It says bedtime.
Oh, wait, I have to officially adjourn, uh, anything else, uh, we wanna talk about? Uh, seeing none, we're adjourned.